We'll call to order the Dickinson City Commission meeting of May 2nd, 2016. And our first order of business will be to review that order of business. Mr. Kessel, I understand we do have two or three items that we're going to pull from the agenda?
That's correct, President Jackson. We'd like to pull item three, our timetable agenda item, at 5:00 p.m., the public hearing on utility easement vacation. We'd also like to pull item 4B, Skill-Based Pay Amendment, and also item number 7A, the change order number two for West Side Water Storage Facility.
Okay. Anybody else have any changes that they want to make to the agenda? If not, we need a motion to approve the order of business.
Some will move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same as sign that motion carries. That will move to the consent agenda. Any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to discuss? Not look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Okay, we have a number of items on the timetable agenda. The first one is not until 5:05 with the change. So we'll move to the regular agenda. And it looks like Ms. Goss is going to introduce second reading of an ordinance for us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is the second reading of ordinance 1611, which makes minor revisions to the motor vehicle portion of the code related to size and weight restrictions and permits. It adds a penalty for the violations, which is taken directly from the state code. There have been no revisions since first reading, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Goss. Any commissioners have any comments or questions on this ordinance? If not, we will open up discussion to the public. This is second and final reading of ordinance 1611. Anybody from the public who would like to comment or ask questions about this ordinance, please step forward. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for action from the commission.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve second reading of ordinance 1611. Any discussion? Not will vote. Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that motion carries. Ms. Goss, looks like you're still up.
Yes, the next item that I have is a resolution for the Kinetic leasing for a Caterpillar 950M. The commission previously approved the lease going to Kinetic for this, but in the lease documents that were sent over, it requires a resolution accepting that lease. So we're just asking for that resolution to be passed today, and it would be resolution number 11, 2016. Staff recommends approval.
All right. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Not, we need a motion.
Move to approve resolution.
We have a motion and we have a second on 11, 2016. Any discussion? Not will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the motion carries. With that, we have a proclamation this evening, having to do with Arbor Day and Arbor Week. I trust that no commissioners will have any problem if I read and we sign this proclamation. So let me, let me read it first. Whereas, "Our city's trees have been a gift to us from generations past whose foresight and concern for the future motivated them to plant shade trees for our benefit, and whereas, we must use the time we have to plant new trees so that future generations will be able to reap the benefits of the shade, beauty, and environmental advantages which we so greatly enjoy. And now therefore, I, President of the City Commission of the City of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim May 20th, 2016 as Arbor Day in the City of Dickinson, North Dakota, and do further proclaim the week of May 13th to May 20th, 2016, as Arbor Week. I call upon the public-spirited and foresighted citizens of our city to plant trees now for the present and future beauty and enjoyment of all our residents." And if there are no objections, I will sign this proclamation. And I don't think we have an agenda item tonight specifically on Arbor Day, do we?
No, we didn't.
Let's see. Mr. Hadley, I'll bet you could explain to the public maybe a little bit more what we're going to do on Arbor Day.
Yes, Mr. President, I can a little bit. Gary can jump in as well. We identified a number of places in our downtown core that had, I believe Mr. Zurov has a number of trees that have come in. We're going to pick the correct varieties and see what we can do. We're probably going to focus around the downtown park. Mr. Kessel has some other items to discuss on that later, but we're going to try to make a, kind of try to do it as an example of what we see our urban forest being in our downtown.
Okay, anything to add, Mr. Zurov?
No, but just that we're going to keep working on it and trying to refine the, what we're going to do for the celebration. So we do have 60 trees that arrived, and we want to look at the location and see what we want to plant. There's other things that would be.
Okay. All right. Thank you both very much. We will move to agenda item 4E, Downtown Lighting. Mr. Kessel, you're going to explain what's happening there?
I am. And Planner Hadley kind of referred to this a little bit. We have entered into a partnership with the park board and staff to revise the downtown square as it exists today, the square that's located at the corner of Sims and Ballard, that has received little attention for some time, and those plants have become overgrown, and it is not as friendly to pedestrians and visitors as we hoped it could be. It's not reached its potential. And so the park board staff has agreed to tear out a majority of those plants, will leave the majority of the trees, will stay, and we'll be providing through Mr. Zurov's staff some crushed asphalt, or, excuse me, crushed concrete to work as a base. There's a couple flower beds that haven't been planted with flowers in some time, and those flower beds will be replanted. We are looking into getting the fountain. There's many people that may not realize that the petrified wood that's in that corner does actually have water, and it did act as a fountain for some time, and that's how it was plumbed. So we're going to look into that and see if we can get that working again. And then the other thing we wanted to do, as we've adopted a lighting standard for the downtown, is replace the lights that are located in that area with the lights that have been adopted, so they can serve in as an example of what the lights will look like in the downtown area once that build-out occurs. So what you see before you is a bid to purchase 10 lights. That was the minimum order that was allowed by the selected or company. And we'll be putting in at least five and possibly six of those lights in the downtown area. There's three different varieties of lights, three different heights, that we'll be putting in, some that are more intimate and friendly to the zero setbacks that we have in that downtown area. So if awnings want to be utilized, they can be. Then we have a mid pole, or a mid-sized pole that can also be utilized, and then a taller pole for illuminating intersections and streetways. So all three of those would be erected in the downtown on the current site, so we'll be using the existing concrete and electrical that's there. We'll simply be swapping out the poles. And the poles that are there are still in decent shape, and our current plan or thought is to repurpose those poles up at the museum center and use them for the lighting that doesn't exist along the pathway that exists up in that area. So we, they will not, they'll be recycled and reutilized in a different place in town. So you have before you then a request for $28,000, I believe it is, to purchase 10 lights, five or six of which will go in that downtown area. This is an unbudgeted number, so my recommendation is we can either use the trail fund that is 30% of the 1%, or we can use half-cent, the fund balance of the half-cent sales tax collections, because the language that was created when that was passed by the citizens was to use for property tax reduction and infrastructure such as streets, water, and sewer. So that would conclude my presentation unless there's questions.
I have a question, Mr. President. Won't these lights interfere with the implementation of the downtown business plaza that we're talking about, that we're thinking?
In their current locations, yes, they would, but they can also be repurposed once that plaza is constructed. And if I was guessing as to when that plaza would be constructed, I think we're at least two years out before that will occur. So this will give the citizens an idea of what those lights will look like when that plaza and the whole downtown plan is implemented.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I have one. The actual installation of the, is that going to be another contract to install them, or is this, that included in this?
That is not included in that. This is just the purchase of the lights, so we wouldn't have to hire an electrician to put them in.
Okay, but we're going to erect them ourselves?
Yeah, we can be on-site and assist with that.
Okay.
But we don't have any electricians on-site.
Right.
I get a little concerned when we seem to make our sales tax, sometimes we make our sales tax the default revenue source. You know, this dollar amount isn't the end of the world. I would like to see it, if we can, come out of the sales tax fine, but aligned item that we've already committed, and I suppose trails would be an example of that. I think it would be a bad habit to, when we don't have something budgeted, just go to the sales tax, because we have a balance there, even though we can afford it. I know we have the money in the sales tax. But I just get concerned about that.
Right.
That habit. So that would be my thought. Trail line item would be an appropriate place that will take away from some of the trail issues.
And I make that recommendation, President Jackson, because the Bureau of RAC actually came up with more funds for the Crooked Crane Trail than we expected, so the, we can utilize those dollars that were anticipated to be spent on that trail.
Okay, good. Anything else? So the motion we're looking for is to approve the purchase of this equipment, this halibut.
That's what. Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the motion carries. Okay, Mr. Kessel, we'll move into reports.
You'll see before you several reports that include documentation from Southwest Water in the form of their annual audit and their consumer confidence report. These are documents they submit on an annual basis to us. Beyond providing them for your information, I don't plan to report on them any further. We also do get updates from their executive director, Mary Massett, on a regular basis. So unless you have specific questions, I'll just move on.
Mr. Kessel, the only thing I'd point out is that I thought the last couple, three pages of their financial report had a nice format to it, and there may be some things we're doing that would fit into that kind of format. Maybe take a look at that. It was the last two or three pages I noticed that I thought were kind of interesting, the way they did that. It was a good report.
Excuse me for taking a couple notes. Ms. Massett will love to hear that. I also included a few thank you notes. We do get these on occasion. I generally don't put them on the city commission agenda. I've been encouraged to do that, so we do have a couple there for your review. Again, I'm not going to make comment publicly on those. We've also received a statement of appreciation from the state of North Dakota, and it has to do with the fact that we provide pay for our staff when they are called to jury duty that goes beyond what they would be normally compensated. So they have the option of either accepting the compensation that they're provided or giving the compensation they're provided to the city and taking their hourly wage. So it's not common that you get those kinds of thank yous, and so I did include that as well. And then if you want, I'll finish mine, and then we'll come back to Attorney Goss. She has one as well.
Sure.
The candidate forums will be scheduled, or are scheduled, for every Thursday in May. They'll begin at 5:30. The first three are to be held in this room. May 5th will focus on the commission president. May 12th will focus on the county commission. May 19th, the city commission. And May 26th, which will be the only one held outside of this room, it's currently scheduled for players on the 26th, again at 5:30, and that'll be park board. So again, May 5th, city commission president. May 12th, county commission. May 19th, city commission. And May 26th, park board. We're looking forward to an expression of comment by all of those participating, and they will be taped and replayed on Channel 19. I also have handed out for you this evening the deputy city administrator position profile. This is a document that we've been working on for a little while, and also is a result of contractor Colin Basinger and Associates' work. So as you can see before you, it's a rather comprehensive document that talks about Dickinson's history, its geography, our commerce, climate. It's, like I say, a very comprehensive document, some of the opportunities, challenges, the position, ideal candidate, what they would look like. And we are, as you can see on the document, May 20th is the day that it closes. We are hoping to have an offer made by the first week in June, and again, if that holds true, we might be able to have somebody by the end of June, right in time for budget season. The next item that I have kind of coincides with the forums, and that's the elections. We have some procedures that need to take place once those elections are concluded. And there was a document included in your commission packet. And by the way, I want to take this time to thank Engineer Kubis for actually writing the memo this week. Normally, that is a task that I do, but he took it over this week, and Attorney Goss has done that for me as well in my absence. So in that document, it talks about, we have to meet as a canvassing board after the election results are compiled. My suggestion would be June 28th, that we meet as a canvassing board, accept or review those results. Then we would adjourn send-in, and the current commission as it exists would no longer exist, and those people who were not elected or choosing to retire would vacate their seats, and the newly elected people would be sworn in and then come and join the city commission. We would also have to elect a vice president at that time, and then potentially choose a method in which to replace a vacancy. We have three people running for commission president. Two of them are on the city commission, and if one of them gets elected, then we'll have a vacancy that needs to be filled. It would be my recommendation that we use the general election as the method to replace that person. That has been our history, that we, for two-year terms, we've done that via, replaced that position via an election. But we have the same process that, or options that are available to you as we had when President Jackson filled former President Johnson's seat. So you can have an election, you can appoint, or you can work without. Again, my recommendation is to use the general election as a way to elect somebody, and then you can appoint someone to fill that short-term time from that June 28th to the November general election. Since that does cover several months, you have that option available to you as well.
Okay, the immediate concern, though, I think our regular meetings in June are, must be the 6th and the 20th, I'm thinking.
Yeah, they don't coincide with the 28th. The 28th is actually a Tuesday.
But then we will have essentially a special meeting on the 28th, at which time a new commission will take over.
That's correct.
Okay.
And it would be nice if we could schedule the timing of that meeting, or we can wait until the election is complete and ask those people that were elected to be involved in setting the time of that meeting.
Yeah, let's give that a little time. We've got a few weeks before all that happens. But I do think if Mrs. Binstock could send us a notice, even without a time, just to make sure we get it on our calendars.
Okay.
That would conclude my report, then.
Okay, before we go to Ms. Goss, anybody have questions on anything that Mr. Kessel has brought up here? Okay? All right, Ms. Goss, you're going to give us a summary of ongoing legal actions we have been in?
Yes, there are four cases that I wanted to provide updates on. The first is Sawtooth Capital Partners, which was a claim brought alleging property damage during the construction of Lip Station. The claims have been resolved between the subcontractors, and a stipulation for dismissal was entered in March, so the case is now closed. The second is Park Little. This was a claim brought following termination from the PD for use of excessive force during an arrest. It's from about eight years ago. The claim was heard by civil service and then appealed to the district court and then the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals. It just recently was petitioned to go to the Supreme Court, but the Supreme Court denied that petition, so the case is now officially closed. The other two is the Thomas Sander case, which is a claim brought alleging unconstitutional and unlawful conduct by PD officials. The case is in the discovery process right now, so that's ongoing. And then the final one is a recent case that was filed, which is Jan Perkel and Kubis, which is a claim alleging multiple things related to water straining on their land from the Cook subdivision. There has been an attorney that was just appointed to represent the city by NDIF, so we are moving forward with the claim right now.
And that would be the normal course of action, insurance reserve, becoming involved and getting their attorneys as appropriate involved?
That's correct, and that was just filed, so we're in the very beginning stages of that one. And that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
We should update any questions for Ms. Goss. With that, we will move to public safety, and we have a report from the PD. Chief Gossinger, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Dickinson Police Department. The Dickinson Police Department recently completed a recruitment video project that started last year. The studio has been used as a DSD job fair and be utilized.
Will be utilized by recruiters, our recruiters in Minnesota and North Dakota at law enforcement academies. This project was budgeted for in 2015. I wanted to take the opportunity to share it with the commission and the public tonight.
This job. This is not your typical job. This job is for the brave, the true, the caring, the good. This job requires you to prevent, patrol, respond, and save. This job could be your job.
Dickinson's a very special community, because even given the oil boom that's occurred over the past five years, the community still has that tight-knit, very small community feel.
I chose to join the Dickinson Police Department due to the number and variety of calls that we respond to. We work with the newest and best equipment.
I chose to join Dickinson PD because I'm local, I'm homegrown, I'm a Dickinson native. Law enforcement's always been something I've always wanted to do.
Our goal at the Dickinson Police Department is to make the city a safe place to live, work, and play. We maintain a low crime rate and improve the quality of life through teamwork, integrity, and respect.
Best part of my job is working on the street and trying to help people and get off, buy guys off the street, so I can make my family safe.
We all, as police officers, when we finally get into it and get a little experience under our belt, we realize just how much of a difference we can make.
The best part of the job is being able to help somebody in some way, in some form, every single day.
The Dickinson Police Department offers positions in over 10 unique divisions, all with opportunities for advancement. The department also provides competitive pay, benefits, specialty training, and individual and group support services. This is not your typical job. This could be your job. To learn more, visit DickinsonPD.com.
We just started using it the last couple of weeks. You may have seen a few parts of it on our Facebook page. In addition to this, we also have officer testimonials on there about working in our community and our department, and there's a couple of different versions that are floating out there. And we plan on using this on our recruiting trips, recruiting trips in Minnesota and in North Dakota.
I would expect it's going to be a good help for you.
It will be, and I, please take the time to take a look at it. It's a nice project.
Any other comments? Thank you much, chief.
Thank you.
Let's see, I think we can, I think we can move to engineering and do a little damage there, Mr. Kubis.
Yes, thank you, President Jackson, commissioners. The first item on engineering today is the bid opening for our 2016 side improvement project. On April 19th, the city opened those bids for the 2016 sidewalk improvement project. This again is the voluntary sidewalk replacement program for landowners to use, the city's contractors, and have those costs put on their property's special assessments. Two bids were received, and the low bid was from Giovanni Construction LLC in the amount of $80,649. The engineer's estimate was $75,000, and that's our budgeted amount in the 2016 budget for this project. Giovanni has worked in Dickinson for several years and has worked on city projects as a concrete subcontractor. They're a licensed concrete contractor in Dickinson, and city staff recommend awarding the contract to Giovanni Construction.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Kubis?
Of that $80,000, how much of the sidewalk, how much private?
That remains to be determined. Right now, we have 15 or so bid items that the contractor bids on, and we really have very estimated quantities. And so it depends on the applications that we receive from private individuals. If you're asking about public.
Well, the dollar cost, how much is it going to be assessed to the property owners of the $80,000, and how much is actually done to the city property?
Right now, we would anticipate very little going to the city projects. Right now, we would anticipate very little going to the city projects. We could use this bid for city properties. We have another line item for concrete and asphalt repairs in the streets budget that would cover those types of improvements typically. But I suppose if the city wanted to replace sidewalk in front of City Hall, we could use this contractor. But we would anticipate, and it's budgeted for $75,000, to be spent and then assessed to private property owners.
So basically, this is strictly for the private property owners. Okay, I wasn't understanding that the city had some sidewalk work that needs to be done, and then we extended it to the private budget.
Typically, we have a separate budget item for that.
That's fine, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we need a motion to approve this bid.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and Mrs. Binstock, you can figure out what just happened. Any more discussion on the motion? If not, we will vote. Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
And Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Kubis.
Well, the next item is a presentation on the North Dakota DOT's assessments of our bridges in town. Assistant City Engineer Marshick has put together a presentation. It might take us past our 505 a little bit.
Yeah, let's put you on hold, Ms. Marshick.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't realize you had a presentation here. I'd forgotten that.
If you'd like, I could introduce the 505 timetable.
I think that would be good.
Okay. Our 505 timetable agenda item is a presentation on our Dickinson Drainage Master Plan. Tonight Brent Erickson with HDR Engineers is here to present on this drainage master plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, Craig. Brent Erickson with HDR Engineering here to give an update on the drainage master plan that we've been completing for the city of Dickinson.
Aaron, where do I have to point this to get it to advance?
Thank you. The purpose of the Drainage Master Plan was to mean a recommendation of Dickinson 2035 or Your Comprehensive Plan. And the Drainage Master Plan will or has identified areas of known drainage, deficiencies or urban flooding. We're presenting possible mitigation measures for these identified problem areas. It proposes a stormwater capital improvement plan or a foundation for a stormwater capital improvement plan. It also identifies regional stormwater improvements or really areas of further study to do regional improvements. It's been completed in two parts. The first part was a framework report that was delivered in January of 2014, and it defined the drainage area goals and policies and our analysis criteria and what would really determine a problem area. And it also prepared a data collection work plan to build upon the data that the city had and really expand it. The part two is the modeling and the capital improvements, and that's what I'm here to talk about tonight. It really formulate, or comes down to the final report. The four steps of it was the creation of the study GIS database. We then created a hydrologic and hydraulic model of the city's system. We refer to that as the H&amp;H model going forward. Working with city staff and the model, we identified problem areas. And then the final report presents potential mitigation measures and estimated planning level costs for mitigating those areas. The foundation of the Drainage Master Plan was multiple sources of data. It started really in 2013 with a LiDAR survey that was obtained during the beginning of the Part I activities. And the LiDAR is a coverage from well north of town to pass the south to the airport, and that really gave us a foundation for drainage areas, drainage basins. It was supplemented by 2014, 2015 field survey commissioned by the city and completed by KLJ. It was collecting crossings, culverts, finding all of the storm drain system in the city, getting the location, the depths. And we then incorporated that into the study GIS model or GIS. Also in there are the 2012, 13, and 14 aerial photographs. We've utilized the city land use shapefile, the city parcel shapefile. We've added to the land use shapefile as necessary to refine the future land use for a little bit more definition for modeling. We incorporated city as-built for areas that we just couldn't get field collection on. Then we have the national soil data, and we incorporated the rainfall data from NOAA. Using that project GIS, we built the hydraulic model. And it was used to verify known problem areas that were identified by the city. The model included, was completed for the 10-year event, which was defined by the Part I as the minor storm, and the 100-year event, which was defined by the Part I as the major storm. The results for the minor storm, in addition to what was identified by city staff, we also identified 21 streets, local streets, and 11 arterials where either the pipe system was surcharging and overflowing into the street, or it was at an open channel crossing where on a local street or an arterial there was actually overtopping during the 10-year event. For the major storm or the 100-year, we found five local streets and 18 arterials where it exceeded the Part I criteria. And for the 100-year, the criteria changed to where a local street could overtop by up to 1 and 1/2 feet during that event, and it would not exceed the criteria. For an arterial or a collector's street, if it exceeded the crossing and overflowed at all, that was considered exceeding the criteria because generally you want to keep those arterials and major collectors open during even an emergency event. The results of the project H&amp;H model was a foundation of the problem areas. In the problem areas, we had, the Part II of the Drainage Master Plan identified 20 existing condition problem areas. They're documented in the final report. And also six future condition problem areas. There's likely more future condition problem areas, and we focused our efforts on the existing infrastructure inside of the city. Existing condition individual projects are estimated to range in total project cost from lowest $200,000 into excess of over $10 million, depending on the complexity of the solution. We've estimated a planning level cost for the 20 existing condition problem areas is ranging between $32 and $34 million. Again, these are planning level estimates. They're not final designs or even preliminary designs. They're to give you a foundation to start that capital improvement plan and start to integrate it and implement it in the coming years. The problem areas have a range of possible solutions, problems, and costs. And we've, for tonight, Engineer Kubis has asked us to present a few of these, and we've broken them down into pipe upsizing projects, channel and street crossing improvements, future impacts, and regional solutions. I'll talk briefly on the future impacts. In the final report, we have a problem summary for each one of these areas as included in the final report. Gives a brief description of the problem, the modeling findings, and then our anticipated costs. For the future impacts, these are areas where we, there are areas of known growth that are gonna happen. And what we've identified is where the flows from those new areas would enter the city system, the existing city system whether it's open channel or a closed pipe, and reported what the compliance flows are, or what the existing condition flow is at that point that future development would need to mitigate to. For some of the larger basins, we've also provided an estimate of the total storage that will need to be distributed across that upper watershed by developers or by the city installing regional detention. For the other existing condition problem areas, we've identified potential solutions and range of costs, and I'll go through these. One of the major areas is the downtown Dickinson storm drain system. And here's First Street, here's Villard, Highway 22, and your underpass is right here. It's both, it was identified as a known problem area, and it was confirmed by the model that it is a problem area. And it's generally associated with undersized pipes for the size of the drainage area and the imperviousness of the drainage area. The recommended solution is upsizing the storm drain pipe system and adding inlets and inlet sizing in conjunction with street improvement projects. Many of these pipe upsizing projects, we do not recommend that you undertake them as individual. They need to be included as part of street improvements. And as we've talked with Engineer Kubis, this can, these can be completed in phases as during your preliminary and final design, you can put together phase-in plans. Project would consist of probably 5,200 feet of pipe replacements, manholes, and inlets. And the estimated total project cost is $4.5 million, and that did include street restoration above it. So if it's included in a street project, that cost would not need to be included in the storm drain. The East Villard Street Storm Drain System was also an area, this area was identified by the city but confirmed as a bigger issue by the model. Pipe overflows during the 10-year event result in a prediction of 1 to 1 and 1/2 feet of flow in the streets. Basically, during the 10-year event, the pipe system's overwhelmed and the overflows come down the street. And once that happens, you can't really control or have a good idea where it goes. The recommendation would be to upsize the storm drain to handle the 10-year event. The project would include 2,000 feet of new pipes and manholes and estimated at $1.2 million. It's hard to see in this, in this scale on the presentation, but like the biggest pipe that's in there right now is a 21-inch, and these would be expanding to 36-inch along. So it's basically doubling the pipe sizes of what is in there. Another problem area that was identified by the model is in Dickinson State, is here. BNSF Railroad is right here. The model predicts surcharging of this entire system with pipe overflows. The reason that the model predicts is because the ending section of pipe is laid at a very flat grade, and it causes a backwater condition all the way up the pipe causing overflows. Based on the data collection, that pipe slope is recommended to be confirmed. It was a little bit of a data gap that we use both as-built and field survey. To solve this problem, it would be replace about 1,500 feet of pipe, manholes, and inlets with an estimated total project cost of $1.4 million. An issue here is that this pipe is an expensive pipe to replace. It does solve a large predicted problem, but it does need to be jacked and under the railroad or installed under the railroad by directional drilling, and there's permitting associated with the railroad. This is on the west side of Dickinson State, and this was an identified problem area by the city staff and also confirmed by the modeling results, which again predicts pipe overflows and street flows during the minor event. Again, this is recommended pipe drain, storm drain pipe upsizing in conjunction with street projects. This is a large project that would result in about 7,000 feet of pipe being replaced and a total project cost of $5.6 million. The last pipe upsizing project we're gonna talk about tonight, or present tonight is, and Craig, you'll help me here, I think I get this wrong sometimes, is First Street Southwest and Southeast. Yeah, it's Southeast and Southwest Storm Drain System. It was an identified known problem area. It discharges in to an open channel, and it has a, the pipe system is influenced greatly by that channel's water surface elevation during the event. And we're recommending that the existing pipes are 18 inches in diameter. And by our mitigation model, we're looking at pipes from 42 to 24 inches. It's a large drainage area with, again, high impervious surfaces, high percentage of impervious surface. And as you can see, there's not a lot of other, see here these black lines are other storm drains in the area. There's just a lot of street flow and streets getting down here. This project would consist of 3,300 feet of pipe, manholes, and inlets, and estimated to cost about $2.2 million. Again, recommended to be phased as part of street improvements. This is an example of an area that's a problem with an open channel. And this is Museum Drive here, Sim Street. And this is the Osborne Channel. This was an identified known problem area. It was confirmed by the model. There's also a known overflow from the interstate ditch. The model did not find that. And it's likely because it's a maintenance issue and it happens periodically. It's something to know about. This Osborne Channel is extremely undersized. What we're presenting here is a way to get the water into it in a manner that eliminates as much of the street flooding for the lowest possible cost. And as you can see, the estimated total project cost for this is $200,000. An alternative would be, and much more expensive alternative, would be to install storm drain from the intersection of Museum Drive down Sim Street off the Page to about here at Ninth Street, where Ninth Street crosses the Dickinson Drainage Way. It's about 1,800 to 2,200 feet of storm drain pipe that would be recommended to be done as part of a street improvement project. It's an alternative, it's gonna, that project would be getting measured in the $2 to $4 million range. But what that alternative project would do would be to remove flow that is going into the Osborne Channel, which really goes down backyards, is very, very flat, very narrow, removes water from there and would take it to the larger drainage of the Dickinson Channel. All right, this is a channel problem area. It's in southwest Dickinson. We have South State Avenue, we have Eighth Street, and this is Eighth Avenue. And this is the Hart River Tributary 47 or the Dickinson South Cooley. This crossing here at Eighth Street, it's undeveloped ground out here, and that will be a future point of compliance. It's a 400-acre future development area inside of the city's ETZ. Distributed volume across that is about 300 acre-feet or 60 surface acres, assumed to be 5 feet deep, distributed across the upper basin as development activities occur. But during the existing condition, there's an identified known problem area in this channel. Specifically, we were told, we identified in between Eighth Street and Eighth Avenue. Here is a 90-inch box culvert or large diameter culvert. Down here at Eighth Avenue, in the existing condition, the culvert's only an 48-inch or twin 48-inch pipes, much less flow conveyance through that section. Water does overtop, is predicted to overtop in both the 10-year and the 100-year event. In the 100-year event, this is a local street, and by the criteria, it wouldn't necessarily be a failure and need to be replaced. But because it overtops about, just under the criteria between 1 and 1 and 1/2 feet, it creates a backwater effect in this part of the channel that does cause hydraulic problems that if this was to be opened up with a larger capacity box structure, the backwater channel, the backwater, the water surface elevation in the channel would lower, and the entire channel would function in a more efficient hydraulic manner. We're estimating the cost of that to be about $250,000. That would be just to solve this problem, the crossing. Any detention upstream of here would be dedicated or done under a future condition problem. We also recommend that, this is one of those areas, because of this large developing basin and the fact that it is mixed-use commercial, industrial, residential, and that this channel is relatively at capacity, that a basin-specific study and plan be done as this area starts to develop out. Here's another identified problem area that was approached as an existing condition problem, but the model didn't find an existing condition problem. This is at Eighth Street near Sheinagel Drive. We did not, our model didn't confirm it, which isn't unusual or kind of a high-level model. It could be a result of maintenance or inlet sizing. What this area does have is there's an undeveloped area that's about 40 acres up here that in the future, your ordinance would require detention, but there are no storm drain pipes stubbed up for the detention in that area. And so it becomes hard to do a detention pond with no pipe to discharge to. So even if a developer of the city were to pull one pipe up, that pipe's gonna then overwhelm the pipes below it because right now this pre-developed or existing condition flow is coming down multiple streets, and it's gonna be concentrated into one or two streets. So what we looked at in the mitigation model is there's just a few runs of pipe that if they're upgraded in size or regraded as slope, which is available, that the future conditions flow from that area would be able to be conveyed through there. flow from that area would be able to be conveyed through there without exceeding the criteria. It is an expensive cost, it's about $1 million to do it. If there is an inlet issue or an existing condition issue that the model didn't find, that $1 million would likely solve that problem too. This would be one where we'd recommend that the city would work with the future development of this to offset that cost.
Mr. Erickson, did you go back to that slide?
Yes, sir.
I assume you and Mr. Kupas must have talked about the fact we're going to replace that street this summer? Have you talked about that?
Well, I don't know if I've talked with Mr. Erickson, but I have talked with another engineering team that is working on Ninth Street. And again, these are what I consider more problem identifications and potential solutions. We want to dig into this a little bit more and take care of it with the project if we can.
At least to consider it while we have the street torn up. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's perfect. Yeah, I've been going through and trying to make sure we got a lot of ground to cover, and you got a big meeting. Now we get to the Dickinson Drainage Way, far and away your most complex problem you have in town. The existing, of course, it was identified as known problems, the model confirmed it. And what the model confirmed was during the 100-year event, at 10th Street, Ninth Street, Eighth Avenue, Third Street, Second Street and First Street, there's significant overtopping of the, of the street crossings during the existing conditions, not even considering future development upstream. It's likely this is just, has been and will be that way or has been that way. It is a complex solution that we have come up with some ideas during the Drainage Master Plan, but the final solution is really larger than what we can do with this technical planning document. The solution may include regional improvements. For example, we know that up here's State Street where the Dickinson Drainage Channel comes into here, comes into the city. Here's I-94. We know, and this isn't the detention area, I'm just highlighting here, that upstream of here, development will occur, and they will be required to mitigate to their existing flows and put it into the Dickinson Channel, and that results in about 70, we're estimating 71 acre-feet of detention for the future conditions. The developers would need to dedicate or the city would have to identify regional, other regional solutions. We also looked at overdetaining at this point by adding in another 81 acre-feet of detention to take pressure off of a downstream overtax channel. And by doing that, and also here, we added a modeling of using this night, area by night, at I-94 as a little bit more of a detention storage, keeping the DOT structures in place, but putting in a head wall or a low-head dam that allows it to back up and attenuate and detain the flow and then go through there. We were able to then take Ninth and Tenth Street crossings and have them meet the criteria of not overtopping during the 100-year event. However, because there's so much drainage area, by the time the flow got down to First, Second and Third Street, even by applying this detention up here, the flows were relatively at the same order of magnitude as what they were in the existing conditions. So these upstream mitigation measures don't solve Eighth Avenue through First Street. Looking at the LiDAR topography and the channel section, what happens once the channel turns south to Eighth Avenue is the longitudinal grade of the channel flattens considerably. The channel also gets a little bit shallower. There's a little bit more width, but what really happens is we're taking all the flow and it's coming down steeper, and then we're flattening it out through there. This is natural topography, and each one of those, Third Street's the worst, there's barely any, any room to get the water underneath the road. Second Street gets a little better. First Street gets a little better. The solution to the overtopping there will likely be replacement of Third, Second and First, or allowing water to overtop Third Street and lowering it and putting it into your emergency plan that during high-intensity rainfall events, that street just needs to be closed. For that reason, because of the reason of the highly complex and interrelated nature of this, we're recommending a sub-basin-specific basin study and plan that addresses both the future conditions and then also the existing conditions in there. As part of that, we recommend that the FEMA flood insurance mapping be updated, which I believe the State Water Commission is moving forward with that right now, and that the city utilize that model to get an even better understanding of the channel downstream of I-94. I suspect you may have some questions on this.
When was the last time the FEMA map was updated?
Commissioner Steiner, our maps were updated in 2010, but there was really no additional study done. They just digitized those maps. The previous ones were from the late 80s, I think, or early 90s, so.
Yeah.
So this was just a digitization more than a FEMA study to update the maps.
So with any changes that we did along that ditch, did it change the boundaries of the flood zone?
Sometimes those boundaries do change, and then there's instances in Dickinson where I know they've changed without a study. And again, that, you know, that's FEMA putting that line on the map for us, and that becomes the floodplain until someone, a municipality or a developer or a private landowner comes through and does a study to say, hey, I don't, I don't think I'm in the floodplain here, and you have to take the onus upon you then to do the study to prove you're outside of the floodplain. So the lines have changed a little bit, but not necessarily because of a study.
The biggest change is the LiDAR topography provides a lot more precision to what the floodplain looks like, especially, or how the floodplain is actually laid out, especially as we look south of the Eighth Avenue crossing.
That's your biggest problem right there, isn't it? Eighth?
Well, yeah, Eighth Avenue, you know, it turns 90 degrees, which water doesn't like to turn, so it slows down, and as the velocity goes down, the water level raises. And then really from here to about here, the gradient of the channel, that's the, that's the flattest grade on the channel, I believe, through town. And so as it, and it's also pretty flat when you look perpendicular to the channel too. So as that water were to raise, our model's not a HECCRAZ or a step-back water model. We used an XP model. So what we can predict is relative heights, and we know there's a problem when you likely look at like a floodplain mapping, maybe it's not as high of overtopping, but it's likely going to spread out much further than what we're anticipating.
Isn't some of our problem, the debris buildup that we can get down along the Valard Street and Second and Third?
Yes, below First Avenue, the channel just sort of, before, excuse me, below, downstream of First Street, the channel sort of loses its form and shape. Third Street is probably a maintenance issue because it's just a bunch of, is, I believe, 10 or 12 36-inch pipes just in a row. There's probably not 4 feet of, there's probably not 4 feet of depth between the bottom of the channel and the top of the road, and that's a lot of water to bring down through there. The flows are like 1,300 CFS or cubic feet per second at that point during the existing condition model. That's a lot of flow to bring through a relatively narrow channel with not a lot of head or depth to work with. And that would be an example, and that, really right there is, the crux of the problem is Third Street forces the water up, and once that water surface elevation has been forced up, there's so little grade it can't get back down. So if either you were to raise Third Street at that crossing significantly, which then there's not a lot of space to get up there, or not as good an idea is to lower it down and just let it go through and close that during, during high events.
I expect that with the completion of your work, not just on this drainage area, drainage way, but all of the work, that our staff is going to have to go back now and absorb what you've done, try to do some prioritization, not just engineering staff, but all of the staff, and bring back some kind of a plan to the city commission. Obviously, we're not going to do all this work in one fell swoop.
No.
But the one thing that seems really obvious, and maybe I'm stating the obvious, is that in a situation like this, we better make, aren't sure that we get the upstream work done as ground is developed, as that planning takes place, as the subdividing takes place, and make sure we get that done at a bare minimum.
Erickson, kind of taking off on President Jackson's comments, you kind of started by saying that there's about $32 to $34 million worth of work that needs to be done to kind of mitigate these issues, and I'm curious what's included in that number. Obviously, as a big-picture planning document that this one is, you've outlined options, you've outlined some things that, that it does include, like roadway remediation. Does it include the engineering, cost of engineering, all those projects as well?
Yeah, we, we assumed like a 20, I believe it was a 20% for engineering, a percentage for administration on the city side. There was mobilization contract, mobilization contract bonds, things like that, big picture items. We also had like a 20 to 30% contingency in there, because we're only identifying the big, big bid items.
What was your expectation for completion? You know, what was your, I'm trying to get at time value of money. What?
30 years.
30 years?
I mean, no different than maybe your water and sewer. I mean, it's a utility, your storm drain system or your storm drain is a utility just like your water and sewer that will need to be maintained and upgraded over time.
Yep.
And for example, downtown Dickinson, I don't believe you're going to go in, even in one project redo every street down there. But an implementation plan, having a preliminary design in an implementation plan, that as the street blocks are developed, just like you're putting in the correct-size water main and the correct-size sewer, this will point you in the direction for the correct-sized storm drain also. This isn't final designs or preliminary, even preliminary designs, that needs to be completed as part of the actual projects, and you may find that there, some of the costs hopefully will go down.
Did you also include then a potential cost for the sub-area plans that you've suggested?
I have not. We can. Is that something that, like order of magnitude on those?
Well, you obviously have a lot of data that you've collected, and so it might be something that's worthwhile.
So kind of like, if you've done that, it's kind of, you're segueing into my conclusion.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Would you understand, the Drainage Master Plan is a living document, like we said, is you have a utility that will continue to expand and continue to be maintained. No one would expect that this would be completed in even a 10-year period. Part two, the final, the Drainage Master Plan, Part Two Final Report will present an initial stormwater capital improvement plan. Project GIS will be transmitted to the city. The GIS is everything that we use to build it, plus all the GIS-based results. The hydraulic models will be transmitted to the city, and they're in GIS format. As the city grows, we recommend that you understand that additional problem areas will be identified, and those should be added to the CIP. I can't, I can't stand here and tell you that I've identified that you only have 20 known areas. There's more, and we'll find them as time goes on. Recommend that preliminary and final engineering designs for the identified problem areas be commissioned and completed on a priority basis, prioritized list by the city. We recommend updating the FEMA FIS managing, mapping for the Dickinson Drainage Way and the Dickinson East Cooley, and that's because those are the two channels that are getting the most development pressure and have had the most changes from our high-level review from what's in the FEMA mapping to what's actually been constructed. We recommend additional study for a comprehensive plan for the Dickinson Drainage Way, and we recommend additional study for a comprehensive plan for the Hart River Tributary 47 drainage area because of the large size of the undeveloped area, the mixed use of it, and the relative capacity issues of that channel that's already been constructed. At this time, sorry I've taken a little bit longer than anticipated. Any other questions that you would have for me tonight?
The only perspective, I guess, that I would add is that four or five years ago, we did a lot of work on our water distribution, our sewage collection, and it's really guided us well the last five or six years, something like that. We knew at the time that we needed to do this work as well. Many of the problems that you've pointed out, we've been aware of. It's better to have it quantified now and to know where we have to go with the next step, but this just means that we have more infrastructure work to do. Some of this, it's very apparent, is growth-related. Some of it is oil impact-related. Some of it's not, and we'll have to address that probably differently as we go forward. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Erickson and Mr. Kupas? Thank you much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Let's see, Mr. Hadley, we have some 520 timetable items that hopefully you can walk us through.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First item, Resolution 12-2016, request for a special use permit for group daycare, adventure child care located at 3137 12th Avenue West. The Planning Commission heard this item, and city staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval.
Do we have a resolution number, first of all? This would be 12, I suspect?
That's correct.
And we need a motion for disposition of this. This is a special use permit, correct?
It is, correct.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm sorry, we need some public input, correct? So I'll ask the public, open a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on this special use permit application for the childcare facility? Anybody from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and now look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 12-2016. Any more discussion? If not, who will vote? Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Hadley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Another special use permit application, Resolution 13-2016, request for a group daycare, Mimi's Playhouse and Daycare. The site is located at 997 29th Street West. The Planning Commission also heard this item, and staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval.
Questions from commissioners? If not, again, we will open, we will open for public comment on Resolution 13-2016, another special use permit application for daycare. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this application? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion on this, as you pick.
Prove to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, we'll vote Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Hadley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Third item is also a special use permit, Resolution 14-2016. Consider a special use permit for a telecommunications tower, the 1845 Empire Way, which is also on the West River Community Center site. The Planning Commission reviewed this item, and staff and the Planning Commission would recommend approval.
Okay, and Mr. Hadley, would you like to make a comment about Park District involvement here?
Yes, the Park District has signed, executed a lease for this facility, this tower. It actually is replacing existing light pole on the baseball fields, and there was a concern that was brought up after the meeting. that was brought up after the meeting on its location and the future expansion of those fields. It's been determined that the location of this will not impact that expansion.
Okay. Questions or comments from commissioners?
Aesthetically, is it going to blend in with the surrounding complex, or?
It's a ninety-foot-tall tower, so it is taller than the existing lights. They will put the lights for the ball field on it, so it'll function as a light tower. It will have a lightning rod on the top of it, so it won't look exactly like the other ball field lights, but it will, it will generally fit in, but it will still look like a cell tower.
But it is a monocle, no guise.
It is.
Other questions?
This is not the one that we discussed early last year about the one on the west side of the?
It's functioning in the same capacity, but it's not the same.
Is this going to go on the west side of the rec center, or?
No.
It's going to go on the east side?
East side, right next to the ball fields, between that and the ice.
So it's the same company?
Yes.
Because I want to get an idea, remember?
Same use, same service.
Remember the pole?
Yeah.
Or just moving it to the east?
Correct.
This application replaces that application that you're talking about. Other questions? Okay. Again, we will look for comment from the public on this special use permit application, Resolution fourteen, two thousand sixteen. Please state your name and?
Evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. My name is Cole Schon. I'm a consultant on behalf of Buell Consulting, just here to answer any other questions. And just want to make note that that additional condition that was at the Planning Commission, that number sixteen with the signed lease agreement, has been met, correct, Mr. Walter? So, I think we've got everything, but yeah, definitely open to any questions you guys have.
Anybody have any questions for Buell Consulting? We have none, apparently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Anybody else? Okay, we will close the public hearing and look for a motion on this resolution.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. That motion carries. And, Mr. Hadley, we can move right to our 5:30 item, it looks like.
Yes, thank you. This application is a rezoning petition, and it's ordinance sixteen twelve, is to consider amending the city of Dickinson zoning map for property located at fifty-one Third Street East. It's a two-acre parcel and the existing location of the Stark County Courthouse. Right now, the Stark County Courthouse is a multi-family. It's actually not a use that's allowed, and so this is a cleanup, removing it to public. It allows, also allows them to go through the future expansion that they're discussing at this time. The Planning Commission heard this item, and staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval.
Okay. You've heard the presentation. Any questions for Mr. Hadley? This is courthouse expansion. If there are no questions, it is first reading of an ordinance, so again, we will look for any public comment on this rezoning request. Anybody from the public have any comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion of this, and again, look for a motion on ordinance sixteen twelve.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not will vote. Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Okay, that takes us to our 5:40 timetable item. Mr. Kessel, are you going to introduce this at all?
Of course, Brock White. He is now taking the lead on the First on First. It's formerly known as Alive at Five.
See, the new name worked.
Yeah, it did.
It's already caught on.
I forgot it already. So he's here to kind of tell us some about those changes and what to expect at this summer's events.
You bet, you bet. Thanks for taking time to have me here, guys. I appreciate it. Do we have the map for the projector? Do we get that? They have? Okay.
We do have the maps.
Okay, perfect. So the biggest thing, before we started even planning the event, we sat down with the Dickinson Police Department, the downtown businesses that are affected by the event, that wanted to get their input and make sure everyone's on board this year, and that we addressed concerns from last year, because there was some concerns, the way things were handled last year, the way things were run. We wanted to make sure that we were really transparent and just open for suggestions. So if you have the maps in front of you, the biggest thing you see is we have moved our stage for the event via, from the intersection. It used to be between the historic Elks Building and American Bank Center. Now it's the intersection of Sim Street facing straight to the west. That's the biggest change you'll see this year. The other one, at the suggestion of the Dickinson PD, to help curb underage drinking, outside beverages, those kind of things, is if you notice on the map where the Esquire is in the rock, there are beer gardens that are gated off. That's the only place you can have hard liquor, mixed drinks. Outside of that, you have to have an event cup, which you purchase weekly, E B I D. It'll be banded. The cups will be different colors every week. That's the only vessel allowed in the open area with the general public to have beer or wine in. That's one of the biggest changes we're making, just to kind of get a handle on things this year and address some concerns we have from downtown businesses with trash, with outside beverages, those kind of things. We have moved our food vendor area up. It used to be in between the Quality Quick Print and the Oddfellows Building. We moved to the intersection of First on First, that will have our food court there. And just a greater plan for more restrooms, more trashcans. And like I said, addressing the concerns of our downtown businesses and friends that didn't like the way some things were handled last year, and just kind of cleaning things up, I guess. Any questions?
Brock, can you highlight some of the entertainment that you're bringing in this year?
Certainly. The biggest acts, you'll know, national acts. We're going to have Blackhawk here, a very famous country and western act. L.A. Guns, we're going to bring back Firehouse, one of our biggest bands that we had last year at the event. Bucky Covington, Dickinson's Own Mitchell will be back as well. Regional bands like Thirty-Two Below, Judd Hous, Dirty Word. So it's a great mix. We have thirteen weeks total. The first event is being held June ninth. It'll go to September first, it'll be thirteen Thursdays. It's still every Thursday at five o'clock downtown, with music starting around five thirty-six and going till, at the recommendation of the police department, till ten thirty at the latest this year. So, you know, last year we had some nights that went kind of late, and we didn't make a few friends, myself DJing at a few of the Beer Garden events, but we'll have things shut down earlier this year and make sure we have everything off the streets by, I believe we said four AM, is that the right time? Four AM. We'll have all the, you know, guardrails, trash, everything cleaned up and out of the area. So you won't see at eight o'clock in the morning, a stage sitting in the intersection. You won't see dumpsters. You won't see just random stuff the night before. So really trying to get a handle on making sure we're better neighbors and partners with downtown this year.
How do you get your funding for this? That's a lot of big?
Sponsors. Sponsors is a big one. Also, we have, I have a presentation with the C V B on Wednesday about a block grant there. So local sponsors, local businesses that have jumped on board, quite a few number of them so far. We're still out soliciting sponsorships. So that's the main way. And then also, we also, there's funds generated from our sale, our profit sharing with the bars, and our vendor areas as well, too.
Mr. White, can you talk about when you'll start setting all this up?
Yep, that's a great question. So it's the recommendation of, in our business with the PD, about using a uniform time all summer long instead of varying times. So setup will begin weekly, every Thursday at one PM. You know, it all depends also getting the traffic out the streets, the cars that are parked there. But our goal is to start setting things up at one PM every Thursday, and start blocking the streets off, and get our stage and sound set up, and then bring the vendors in around three o'clock, set their mobile food courts up and whatnot, too. So we want to make sure everyone knows that it's the same every week. We're not going to surprise you with an eight AM, or a four o'clock, or a two o'clock. It's going to be one PM all summer long, every Thursday.
Have you talked to the business owners along that street about the one PM?
We have. We had a meeting back in January with them. We've had talks with them along the way, the whole, the past, you know, I guess it'd be four months now are going on. So times have moved up. It was a two o'clock time. We moved to one PM. But I'd say that the more than not are aware of the setup time.
Are they all aware of it?
I'd say more than not. I'd say most, I'd say ninety-nine percent are aware of the time. Yeah. Have you heard otherwise, or are there concerns, or?
Just some, some concern about shutting the streets off that early, because some of them that have the businesses in the middle there where?
The event area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would, I would, you know, I think it's great, but I'd feel a lot more comfortable if you contacted every business in that short little district there.
Yeah, we made all of our best efforts in continuing, so the lines of communication are very wide open, so.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a way, since you're expanding the event in terms of two intersections, to affect businesses in a way, start closing off one section first and a second a little later?
You know, we talked about that in some of our planning meetings, but at that point, you know, if we start shutting one off at one o'clock, and then once two o'clock, and then it's, it's an hour, and it's really getting the tread, the cars off the street, the parked cars, I don't think would make a huge difference, really. I mean, that's the only thing we've thought. We've talked about it, we've addressed it, but I think one o'clock, the uniform time for everyone, so everyone knows, is probably our best bet, and it's the same every week, too.
Brock, would you look at additional garbage, reduce the?
Yes, yes.
Have you identified their locations?
We have a list of the locations on there, but we're going to have them probably, you know, all over the intersections, by every bar. We have a list of the exact spots, but we're going to, we're going to contact the city for additional roll-offs and help in that department as well. Yeah, we've also, I also want to, if, I don't know if you guys show the map on the TV show, the Channel nineteen TV show, but the restrooms list on there, that's not a hard and fast location for the restrooms. So if you're a business that sees this and is concerned, those aren't, we needed to get a count of how many we're going to have, and so the restroom locations, it isn't the final landing spot for those on the map.
You alluded to it a little bit, but I assume there's been some pretty detailed conversations with the fire department?
Yes.
I'm thinking about access questions?
Yes.
Access issues, and the same with the police department. And, you know, I'm just going to ask, we've got both PD and fire with us tonight, if there's anything you guys want to say. And if not, that's fine, but I think that's really important, this issue of access for both departments with these events.
Good evening, President Jackson, Commissioners. Fire Marshal Mark Selly has been at several of the meetings, along with Assistant Chief Barrows, and one of the things that we're looking at, of course, is not just access for fire apparatus, but also for ambulance access also. I do believe that that's been taken into consideration for apparatus, for fire apparatus access. They know that we need to have a readily available twenty-foot aisle in case we do need to have access to that area. I think that the layouts on their maps show that they're planning for that, even though that may be an access way or an aisle that's filled with people at some point in time. Nothing hard and fast like the stage that, that can't be moved to give us what we need. At this point in time, we're fairly comfortable with that, and I know Chief Dossinger and his group have been aware of that for their access also.
We have had several conversations with the First on First group. We were brought in early on, and we had an opportunity to express our concerns to them and problems that we recognized last year. And the biggest thing that we wanted was consistency this year, especially when we had a, we knew we needed additional staffing on these dates. We want to see a consistent setup, and we also expressed our concerns for alcohol consumption, the trash left behind, and the comments that we usually got from the business owners downtown. We wanted to address those issues with them, and so far, they've been very good to work with and provided answers to us on those problems.
Okay. Any questions for either of these gentlemen? Thank you.
Thank you.
I ask the questions because, for me at least, it's, it's not hard to notice that there's been an evolution in how Alive at Five started as a small, kind of a family thing, maybe a band, and there's certainly, the event has evolved. A good thing. A lot of people taking part, certainly bring some life down.
The word I keep using is that it's a one-day street fair, thirteen Thursdays out of the, the summer.
But again, it's different than how we started. Somebody asked the question about merchants downtown, the Downtown Association, that, you know, I certainly hope they've been involved. They have to be.
We took their, their concerns into consideration from day one. We continue as well to this point forward.
Mr. Kessel, as far as permitting, now I understand you probably need to go through the sidewalk permitting that we've just instituted. Other permitting that comes to this board, I don't think there is anything.
No, not, they do have to get permits each, for each event, because it does have liquor involved, and it does have street closures involved. So they've been good in the past about getting those. My hope is that in the future, they can be more timely.
Our plan this year is to submit on a month-by-month basis, so fill all of June out, all of July, and all of August, do them all in one shot ahead of time. So you'll probably see the first batch for June coming in the next week or two from us.
That'd be wonderful.
Yep. Our, yeah, like, our biggest goal, like I said, is, is open lines, and with the city, with the PD, with the fire department, downtown, and just better communication this year is our biggest goal.
And we appreciate that a lot, Mr. White.
Certainly.
As you've heard before, Mr. Zaroff Department, as has been outlined, our police and fire have a lot of input, but so does our Public Works Department. And so any advance notice of changes is much appreciated.
Certainly, yeah. Any other questions?
I have one. If, if you could talk just real briefly, one of the maybe semi-permanent features of this new setup is in the northwest corner, the First on First Storage. This is in the city lot behind the Elks Building. Mr. White and I had talked about this. My direction was that this needs to be a part of the permit. It might be on, on every event's application, but some of the things that get used on a weekly basis?
Guard rails, banisters, bearers, that kind of bearers, but things that we use in the event every week. Instead of having to pack them up and move them various locations around town, we can store them at, having them in one place in a secure storage downtown every?
I just wanted to point that out, that there'll be, as this proposal is laid out, there'll be some semi-permanent storage. I'm assuming this would just be through the duration of the event, and then in the fall and winter months, it goes somewhere else.
It'll be gone.
So just so everyone's aware of that. And I think the fire department would like to know the contents of the storage, that we're not having a giant pyrotechnic.
No, I don't believe we have any pyrotechnics in our events all summer, unless Tracy's got some surprises for me. I don't know. I think we'll be good.
Are you talking about that storage in the west lot or the east lot?
And really quick, Craig, we have, at our last meeting, since we've talked, we've moved the stage. And like I said, it's going to be in the Sims intersection. We've talked about, and Tracy mentioned to me, Tracy Thiers, she's on our planning committee. There's some, some city land behind the post office there, is that correct? Is there parking lot, a lot that you have?
Well, there is. That's a fairly busy parking lot.
I understand, yeah.
Commissioner Steiner, this, as it was proposed, was, was just behind the Elks Building, to the north of the Elks Building, on the, I think it's on the west side by the alley.
That lot is a hundred percent full every day, but the one to the west of it is, has some openings.
Okay.
The old city hall.
The old city hall. And, and that's great. I mean, those are the comments that we need to hear. I don't get over to that parking lot every day, so.
We know.
Good comments.
We're not picky. We'll take space anywhere close to the event area. So those are things we can talk about.
Anything else for Mr. White? Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thanks for taking the time. Appreciate it.
Good luck. All right. We have a 5:50 timetable item with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Ms. Thiel, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. Again, I do this annually, and we send out the report to all of our stakeholders. I think you received it in the mail. I talk about this past year. Of course, it's, it's been a little bit of a challenge with things that have been occurring with the energy industry, obviously. There's been some occupancy now that is available for our travelers. There has been additional rooms that have taken place up to the north, is the town place. We've had some changes going on. There's been some good things as far as on the statewide level. We have had the number five place in the world for the national park being named through New York Times Travel, and that came about through the Tourism Division with a writer that came out and traveled toward the park, the Enchanted Highway being the number one place in North Dakota to visit. The Midora Musical had record numbers last year with their anniversary, and coming up this year, we will have the hundredth anniversary for the National Park System. We're anticipating a lot of people coming for that. And Josh Dumall has been named the spokesperson for the Tourism Division also. Just online from when they started their campaign, that would have been the end of January through February 2nd, there's been over a billion impressions online for the Tourism Division. So that is, that's very encouraging. We're looking at the people that are traveling for leisure to come in this next year and help fill some of those rooms. I do list some of the things that we do each year for activities, particularly in the marketing. Obviously, we have different audiences that we work with, and one of them is leisure travel that you'll see on there. We do the different print ads, a lot of those are national ones that go out. We work with the Tourism Division with their media plan and the research that they do. You'll see some of them listed on there. Some are general awareness ones, but a lot of them are the ones where we get the direct qualified leads. We get the names and addresses of people to send information out to. And then online programs, and as you know, online marketing now has increased dramatically the last few years. This is something just a few years ago, we really didn't do, but we're co-op-ing with the Tourism Division on that and following some of their research. You'll also see that we do approximately thirty-five thousand visitor guides each year that are printed, that are into the rest areas and sent out to people, and also into our lobby. We do tear-off maps that you'll see here in town, but are also mailed out to people, and each year during the hunting season, we deliver six-hundred-and-fifty, approximately, hunting packages that are handcrafted for the hotels and the airport. We participate with sports shows that go on with the Tourism Division. We've got a video at the Hailstone Rest Area along Interstate 94. We do our billboards, we've got awareness cards for people in town and what we mail out, and if you've been out to the airport, there is also a touchscreen kiosk that is directed right into our computer system through our website, so they can access the information in town as they're arriving. And of course, we try to freshen up things with new photos, things like that, because we use that in a lot of our content marketing. Last year, we also tried to do some things directly with the leads we had gotten the year before, and those are ones that we did direct mailings for the leisure market and also hunting, and sent out awareness letters to those people. We host different writers that come in, and these are selected by the Tourism Division, so we pay their lodging, their meals, take them around town, and try to help them to get familiar with things. This is how a lot of our different articles are written. It's really that direct one-on-one with those writers that are coming in and also tour operators. So those are a lot of the one-on-one things that we do with them. You also see online from what we do, our website visits have increased the last two years. I would have to say within the last four years dramatically increased, and a lot of that's going back to some of those online marketing ads that we've done, so you've seen an increase there. Just a little bit on the webpage views themselves, it isn't a whole lot, but again, the last few years, those have picked up quite a bit. But mobile web device is up. I don't think that's a secret for anybody. Everybody's using the handheld now, and our site is mobile also, so we've seen a lot with that. And then we also list the top pages that are accessed into our, our Google Analytics. Top states that are visiting, Illinois has popped up quite a bit. In fact, the Tourism Division has now started this past year doing a lot of the major marketing to the Illinois market through there. Social media's gone up quite a bit. We're becoming very active with the social media on Facebook. We also do Facebook paid ads to go out, so we've seen a thirty-two percent increase in that, and Julie in our office does a conversion directly over to Twitter with that, which has increased. We have a TripAdvisor page, and we also have ads with that within the Tourism Division that we do, and then also starting into the Instagrams. You'll see our financials at the bottom with that. We're supported by the two percent lodging, which is a historical income source for all CBPs. Our visitor services is about equal to the year before. It's roughly just over eighty-nine-hundred last year, and year-to-date, we're probably right about that same amount where we're at right now from last year. You'll see some testimonials, we like to put that on there. A lot of the way we gauge our, our visitor services is people that are coming in, is by the comment cards. Those are our direct one-on-one, as people are coming in, that we're able to touch as far as things to see and do in the area. And of course, we do a very regional approach with everything, selling what we have in town first, different experiences, and then going on to the different things that are around us. And a lot of times, we have people that'll stay like four to five days, make it the base here, and then head out from there and go over to Midora up to kill deer and other places. You'll see some of the different numbers on the information request with that. We're up fifteen percent on the, on our direct mail that we sent out, so we sent out over twenty-one hundred packets that were put together in the office. Our hunting was increased also quite a bit, but you'll see that because the year before, we really didn't do much on the hunting ads, so those have been increased quite a bit. And that just points out, when we do do the advertising, we are getting the requests that are coming in. A few years ago, back in 2012, we really did not do any advertising going out, or even our leisure numbers were virtually nil. When we started to do the ad placements, that started to climb dramatically with that. You'll see there's a decrease in the guide to the city, and that is only because the Tourism Division went through a conversion on their website, and so those numbers were down, but they're looking at changing companies. That's just direct online, they can order our guide through the state. So while you'll see that the total requests are down, that's not really a true number, the total request individually through our office directly, we're up. It just is down because of what happened with the state. And then we have a gift shop. It's not very large, but we do some gift shop sales through there, and that's mainly as a convenience to the travelers that are coming through. You'll see some of the different meetings and groups that are coming through, that's what Julie works with, and obviously, that's a different part of what we do. And you'll see the ones that are listed there, some of the larger ones, obviously NDTA, the tournaments that are brought in for pool and dart are always large tournaments in a good time in our off-shoulder season that we need them. But you'll see some of the other ones listed over there. Those aren't all of them, obviously, but there's some of the bigger ones, and there's a variety of ways that we try to attract those. We do some print publications. You'll see that we develop postcards each quarter. The conference centers, both the Astoria and the Ramada are highlighted, and then we'll also be doing one with some of the overflow for the different North Dakota organizations. Approximately four hundred of those are mailed out, so we changed that up a little bit, and that has been effective. We've had people call as a result of that. One of the other bigger projects we did last year was an informational packet that was also sent out to the four hundred organizations. We did a jump drive, we did animotas on there, which is videos highlighting the conference centers. So we're trying to do a big push with that, showing the different services that we have and the new updated rooms that are in town. The other page fifteen, you're gonna see the different updates, and that's listing what we've gained in town for different things, restaurants, lounges, and obviously, Allison Larry League have now retired after twenty years, we put that in there, so we kinda do an update with that. Also, on the bottom, you're gonna see the room counts, the hospitality tax, and the, and the lodging tax, and where we are at. Our room numbers were at just over eighteen-hundred. We did have a closure in town for the Queen City Motel, we do list that, but we also did gain with the Town Place in town. So right now, we're probably about a thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-three. I use thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy, sometimes rooms are taken out, but, so as of last year, when the report was made, it was at a thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirteen. But, so we had a little bit of increase on that room there. The occupancy rate was decreased thirty-two and a half percent from 2014, so last year it concluded at forty-eight-point-two percent, and the average daily rate last year was a hundred-and-three dollars and fifteen cents. You'll see the city tax collections, they might be a little bit different than what you receive, only because we use North Dakota Treasury Office, and obviously, all collections are behind a little bit. And then I also add in the gross revenue for each of those taxes. On the, on the food and beverage, on the one percent, I do back out the lodging tax on that, and then put in the gross. So last year, that combined amount is a hundred-and-forty-four million, three-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-six dollars of gross revenue impact in town here. We do administer the event grant program. Brock was up here visiting about the block grant that they'll be applying for. This historically has been sixty thousand dollars. We did ask and receive an additional twenty thousand dollars last year. That twenty thousand has been designated for a block grant for entities, organizations that have multiple events during the year, and so that would be brought up to eighty thousand a year. And these are ones that are held each year and some that are rotating within the state, so we break that up a little bit. Some are annual ones, Rafferty's Fair and Expo, through the Fair Association is awarded fifteen thousand dollars annually for marketing purposes. So, and you'll see the ones on the, on the right-hand side that were awarded last year. And when they do this, they make an application, they have to fill out evaluation, and then I do also a copy of the income expense receipts, making sure that they total up for what was awarded to them. Activities in the community, there's different things that I've spoken at, things that we host, and we are very active within the North Dakota Legislative Session. I'm on the Executive Committee for the Tourism Lions Partnership. We have three-time full staff and then also two summer staff people and one volunteer, and our board is listed below, so I would answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Thiel. A good report. Any questions for Ms. Thiel? I would only ask you one. Do you have any specific examples that you're seeing with room vacancy now that we haven't had for a couple, three years? Are there any groups coming back to Dickinson? Are you bringing any new groups in? And maybe you said this and I missed it, but are there some specific examples that having some vacancy is bringing some groups back to Dickinson?
Yes, there are. Julie would have the specific groups, but I know with us visiting with that, that has occurred not only because of the vacancy, but also the attractive rates now, and that, you know, and that was an issue with us when we were competing with the eastern part of the state. And so, yeah, now we've actually been able to get some of those back, and also the tour companies that are coming back.
Okay.
So it's been very beneficial to be able to have those rooms, the availability, and also rooms that are now updated and new rooms, too. We've got, we have a lot of product that is, is compatible with a lot of leisure travel groups and meetings want to have.
Okay. Well, we probably don't say it enough, but thanks for the work that you do.
You're welcome. If anybody would like to come in at any time, I'd be happy to visit with them on any details of any of the marketing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next timetable agenda item is a presentation by Stark Development Corporation. Mr. Baker?
Mr. President, members of the commission, I see our PowerPoint is up. It's dark in here for reading. A little light on here. Well, as you can see, I'm Galen Baker. I'm Executive Vice President for Stark Development Corporation. We are a staff of two, myself and Anita Tisber. Our mission, to assist Southwest North Dakota by facilitating quality business opportunities and quality of place. We work with businesses often at the very initial stage, when they're very young and just starting out, and we often work with businesses that are mature and established. But we do believe that the businesses we work with all have a shot at being successful here, and, you know, we're, we're a place that tries to help them be successful and help them to stay around. The quality of place, I believe that's why the general public supports economic development. The, people have a sense of economic security when you've got things going on that are, that are positive for the economy of the area. They want to protect their personal investment in homes, in schools, in property, you know, it's just a good thing for them if they feel economically secure. Move to the history of Stark Development. Oh, there's a clicker here. Where do I point this? Anywhere?
Anywhere.
Ah, okay. We were originally incorporated as Dickinson Development Corporation way back in 1985. You'll recall, well, some of you will recall, that in 1985, we'd just gone through an oil bust, and, and the city was in debt. And, you know, some key words there that you see, positive in the Dickinson Development Corporation mission, positive. They wanted a positive attitude because there was so much negativity then, after the oil bust, you know, it was very difficult for people, and, and so, positive, stable. They wanted stability because, of course, the, the immediate past had been the oil boom-bust, and stability was something that was lacking, they felt, in that, at that time. Assist existing businesses, they, you know, they saw businesses leave and fold as a result of the bust, and, and they wanted to help preserve those that still existed here. And quality of new business. They wanted to bring new business in, and quality of life again. They wanted to preserve that quality of life that remained in the community. Our mission today, pretty much restated, but very similar. You know, the, the circumstances are somewhat similar. I don't believe that this is gonna be the kind of bust that we had back in the eighties. My prediction would be a nice gradual increase in crude oil prices, and I believe a manageable increase in impact on the city and the surrounding area. The community leaders of the day back then, you know, some of these folks are still very involved in, in Dickinson today, but they were, they were visionaries. They were people who were looking to see, you know, the town do a little better. Our, in 1992, we became the Stark Development Corporation instead of Dickinson Development Corporation. I believe there was additional legislation at that time for, that encouraged the broader These people that are on the board now, they give of their time and expertise to come to a meeting in the middle of the day, in the middle of the month. They get no compensation, and they get no expenses paid. Best practices. There are a number of best practices that, that need to be followed, and clearly, I sent the wrong slide, because there's more to it than this. But let's talk about these. Avoiding poor credit decisions. There are a lot of economic development organizations around the country that engage in revolving loan funds of their own. They're not trained in making credit decisions, and they generally make poor ones, and they wind up at the, at the tail end of any kind of recovery if something goes bad, and usually never get repaid. We don't have a revolving loan fund. We have instead the Bank of North Dakota, which is a very good tool to have, it's the only one of its kind in the nation. The Bank of North Dakota has that kind of credit decision-making capability. We use, we use the PACE program a lot. Stands for Partnership Assisting Community Enhancement. The PACE program is a Bank of North Dakota program that encourages businesses to borrow money, to expand and grow, or to relocate here, and what it does is it's a participatory loan program. The business themselves has to go to the, a regular bank and to the Bank of North Dakota, they borrow half the money from each. They, they actually get the due diligence conducted on them twice, both, by both banks, prior to receiving a loan. The PACE program, then, once that due diligence is done, allows them to borrow at a reduced interest rate. The reduced, the reduction in the interest rate does not come from the banks not getting their money. Banks are private enterprises, they're, they're businesses, they need to make their money, too. The interest reduction comes from a grant from the Bank of North Dakota to pay against that interest, and a zero-interest loan in most cases, sometimes a grant, from the local community, in our case being Stark Development Corporation. And we supply those funds for them to do that. Like I say, sometimes we, we do it at a zero-interest rate for the term of the loan, hope to get paid back over the two years at the end of the loan. The end of the loan might be twenty years out. Sometimes it's five years out, it varies. Sometimes we make a grant of that money, because if it's an organization or a special incentive that needs to be done, an organization that's, say, a nonprofit or something, we tend to be a little more lenient there. Business retention, our business retention efforts are largely through, you know, things like the Bank of North Dakota, or not the Bank of North Dakota, the manufacturers round... North Dakota or not the Bank of North Dakota, the Manufacturers Roundtable and some of the spinoffs. We, you know, we, we not only participate in that, that's a meeting of many of the area leading employers, but we also have some spinoffs from that. The Southwest Human Resources Association was a spinoff of the Roundtable and now has, is a very large group of all of the businesses in town that are, that have a concern for human resource development and human resource, you know, administration. That's one of the spinoffs, the Manufacturing Strategies and Solutions Group, which is just a group of manufacturers only who get together and talk about the specific things that are affecting growth of those businesses and, and trying to collaborate if they can to help to grow those businesses. And then of course, we, we do site visits and tours of those businesses. You know, that when, when we, when we try to make sure that they love Dickinson, we know that Dickinson area manufacturers have had offers to move. We've, we've seen offers where they were offered an entire new plant, completely equipped with workforce, free, if they would just move out of Dickinson and move there. And, you know, those offers are out there and that's our competition. They and Mexico are, are competition for the businesses that we have. State and federal agency relations. We have to rub shoulders with those state and federal agency people because they are the people that make a lot of big decisions that matter to us. They, you know, people are more comfortable doing business that they're familiar with, with other people they're familiar with. They don't necessarily want to do business with somebody that's an unknown to them. So you gotta be there. You gotta be at the table or you are for dinner. And so, I mean, it's, it's important that you be there. I've served, I can't count the number of task forces and committees and legislative testimony that I've given over the 20 years I've been here. You know, I can tell you who some of them are right now. I work, I serve on the Workforce Education Advisory Council. It's a group mandated by the Legislature. We're looking for opportunities to improve workforce education and looking for redundancies that we can eliminate in workforce education. I served as the President and a Board Member for the Economic Development Association of North Dakota. That gets all the economic developers from all around North Dakota together, compare best practices, compare, you know, what we can do better. I also served on the Mid-America Economic Development Council Board of Directors, which is a 10-state organization, somewhat similar, except for, you know, the bonus there was that they bring in professional site selectors from all across the country that are doing site selection for major industries. And we got to know those people and touch base with them directly. I also served on the refinery study advisory committee with Senator Wardner and Representative Meyer at the time. You know, that was a few years ago and, and we, we studied the refinery situation. We looked it over very carefully, you know, the end result of that report was that maybe a diesel refinery could, could be built in North Dakota and lo and behold, you know, happy circumstance or just, again, be at the table. And that refinery wound up in Dickinson, North Dakota, the first one built in the country in 37 years. Now we're looking at the possibility of another one. So you gotta be there in order to play and, and so we try to be there. Collaboration among local and regional entities. 20 years ago when I came here, I did realize that people weren't talking to each other. I started the Southwest Economic Development Professionals Network. That is a network of individuals and organizations all involved in economic development. It includes the Roosevelt Custer Regional Council, Terry Heel at the Convention Visitors Bureau, the Chamber of Commerce, the economic developers and Chamber of Commerce people from all of Southwest North Dakota. And in fact, we, we do meet usually about once or twice a year with similar entities from Eastern Montana. And we do that in order to, to know what each other are doing, know what practices are working, be able to assist each other. You know, we're, we're kind of in this party together. You know, we don't, we think that what's good for Bowman is good for Dickinson and vice versa. And, and we want everybody that's in the region to, to work together, collaborate. We also do that with other groups. Our Community Relations Committee that meets once a month every Friday morning, has a number of the major employers at the table from just Dickinson, including the city, including the county. We try to, we try to get a group there that is broad-based and we talk about the issue of how do we promote Dickinson better and how do we solve the, the local problems that, that we're all concerned about? And, and you know, no matter whose house they're in. Remember the Southwest Human Resource Association I mentioned? We also were some of the early starters in the information technology organizations. The North Dakota Information Technology Council had, I think, three board members from, from Dickinson when it first started out, a statewide organization. I was the treasurer of that board. And that organization is still doing well today. Information technology is indeed a growing part of North Dakota's economy. We'd like to capture a little more of that, but you don't capture it again if you're not at the table. Of course, the Oil and Gas Association and the American Petroleum Institute, I actively participate in both of those. You have to keep your finger on the pulse of that industry. We really believe that it will come back, you know, and, you know, whether it surges or whether it comes back gently is a matter of debate apparently, but it will come back, I believe, to, to a significant degree. I don't think we'll have to wait 27 years like we did last time. Invest in your people. We believe very strongly in that, you know, and the people, I believe, are the reason we have manufacturing here. You know, look around. I mean, would you locate a wood products cabinet company so far from the forest and so far from the markets? No, it was the people that made that happen. Would you locate a bakery business so far from your markets? Yeah, there's some of the raw materials close by, but let's face it, huge distribution network required. You know, you look at some of our other businesses that have come here, have prospered here. It's through productive, adaptable, educated people. That's why we've invested in the Baccan University Scholarship Program. That's why we're, we're working now on improving the skills center offerings of the school district and partners with them. So, so that's one of our, our big pushes right now, actually. Some other things that we didn't cover. State, let's see, we, we didn't cover the business incentive agreement. We, we work hard on transparency as well. You know, we, we want people to know what we're doing. We are, we do have a business incentive agreement for every business deal that we do. That business incentive agreement is available for inspection at our office. It does not give the companies detailed financial information, but, you know, that is protected by the North Dakota Attorney General, so we don't do that. You know, we use executive session when we should. We also send out the Economy at a Glance publication, which is widely distributed and, and people do read that, take a look at where we stand. We send our board packet and our minutes and handouts after the board meeting to all of you, to the newspaper, to the county commissioners. So, so they all have copies of that, the Jobs Development Authority as well. So, so we try to get that information out there. We send it to television stations and other media as well. So, so those are some of the, some of the practices that, that we engage to make sure that things go right. I want to take some time to go through some of our projects. I only went back 10 years, this being 2016. Going back only 10 years did leave out some of our, some of our very good clients like Funshine Express and, and Rider Welding and so forth, but went back as far as 2006. In 2006, you can see what, what projects we did were our cost share and the total project cost. Let me talk a little more about those projects. In the manufacturing side, two companies involved, Steffes Corporation and Amber Waves, and those were PACE loans. And TechLink Incorporated also, we gave a grant to, and that's an exported service company. We did a lot of community development work, the biggest single expense there being $50,000 spent on a study that we shared with the city, the chamber and developers. The results of that study, that was a study of our community identity and retail potential. And that, that was a study conducted by the Buxton Group back then. You know, and we used that in many of the Destiny Dickinson works that we did after that, which were sending people to the International Congress of Shopping Centers and that sort of thing. We're in 2007. Manufacturing clients that during that year included Stone Mill, TMI, Twisted Bakery, and let's see, those were the manufacturing ones. Stone Mill is notable because, you know, that was the first time I believe that we did a loan with them. They, they are, it's a name you'll hear again and again here. Stone Mill is currently the largest food-grade flax processing facility in North America. Is also the largest organic flax processing facility in North America, possibly in the world. TMI, as you well know, is, you know, back then was, was growing in, in equipment purchases and so forth. You know, they're back on the growth track again now. Our community development that year, should mention the Theodore Roosevelt Expressway Association began, and so we invested in that on Stark County and Dickinson's behalf. All of the communities and counties up and down Highway 85 in North Dakota are members of that association. They all pay a differing fee, but that association has gotten some real progress. I don't think we, any of us expected that they would make as much progress as they have in the four-laning of Highway 85. At this time, there's a application in to take care of that Long Axe Bridge, which is a barrier to a lot of commercial transportation because of its height and width restrictions. 300-mile detour around that bridge if you're, if you don't fit. So we need to get things like that done. We also invested in housing demand analysis to the $215,000 that year with Roosevelt Custer Regional Council, our partner in many things. Let's go to 2008. Our manufacturing clients that year were Steffes Corporation, Kildare Mountain Manufacturing, Amber Waves, Cool Waters Incorporated, Baker Boy and Midora Environmental, and the Twisted Bakery and Custom Data. So there were quite a few that year in 2008. We also did a exported services PACE loan with McNeil Development, which was Remco Software. Our community development investments that year, we gave $15,000 to the Richardson Memorial Hospital and we also put 124/6 into the Strom Center. One of many contributions to the Strom Center that we made over the years, our total contribution actually to the Strom Center and the Small Business Development Center over the years of their existence up there was a little over $330,000. We also, at that time, invested in industrial site evaluation. This was 2008, remember? We spent $45,000 on that and we did get a matching grant from the Economic Development Administration for another $45,000. That industrial site study was done by KLG. Where are we at? 2009. We're gonna get there. Hang on. Our manufacturing clients that year were Midora Environmental, Regent Development Corporation, which did a Kildare Mountain Manufacturing project down there, even though they're not in Stark County, we helped them out. Steffes Corporation, Midora Environmental, Abel Incorporated. Abel, as you know, is not per se a manufacturer, but they do indeed produce goods that are, you know, they, they enhance the value of stuff and, and, and they do good work. We helped them out as well. Stone Mill was in, in the mix again. Our biggest community development thing that year, couple of the biggest, were Richardson Development Company, a $9,700 grant to do some studying of the economic potential of developing out by the interstate for them. And then of course, the census was coming up and so we spent a little over $13,000 on helping get out the census count. It was very important to us at that time that the city of Dickinson be counted well because we, we knew very well that the census count meant that, means a lot of future financing for the city and the county and various entities. So we invested the money to, to put on a staff person to encourage people to respond to the census. It was a marketing effort for the most part. In 2010, our manufacturing clients were Steffes Corporation again, Twisted Bakery again, and Baker Boy again. Our exported services were Multi Systems Inc. for the purchase of Remco, Remco, and Multi Systems has had employees there for a number of years. I, I think they've wound down now. I really think that that, that whole business model has changed very dramatically. Multi Systems is out of Phoenix and, and, you know, their business model has had to change given the advances in technology. We also started doing housing projects then. By 2010, it was apparent that the oil boom was coming and Dickinson had not seen a new apartment building built in 30 years because it didn't cash flow. And in order to help those projects cash flow so that we could get new apartment development started in Dickinson, we did flex pace financing for those projects. We did put some extra stipulations on them, so, so we get our money back a little sooner on most of them, but we, we saw the need to get market rate apartments built because there hadn't been any built for 30 years and we saw the oil boom coming. We also that year partnered with ROARs to do a retail and hotel motel study and we, we split the cost with them, cost us about 21 grand, cost them about 21 grand. And we had that study, study done by McComb Group out of Minneapolis. That thing had a lot of legs. It helped us, we helped us get a lot of retail interest into Dickinson as a result of that study. So we were happy with that. We also saw that the airport was growing. We did a $100,000 grant to the airport for a hangar, for a new hangar, and we also did a $75,000 loan on that same project. Sorry, Clayton, I went on too long. 2011, we got into the housing business pretty big here to, to help get that, those apartments constructed. We did one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight housing projects, apartment projects. We also did a Kildare Manufacturing Equipment Purchase PACE as well as one with Steffes Corporation. And, and we also worked with Lufkin Corporation to get them here. We competed for Lufkin's facility with other towns in Western North Dakota. We offered them an incentive package, a nice location and so forth, and fortunately, they did choose Dickinson. And of course, you know, the, since they make the pumps and put together the pumps, you know, those are, those are nice wear-outable machines and they do wear out and need to be replaced and so Lufkin is still here and very active. Our, our, let's see, our community development, the biggest things there that year were, again, another airport hangar grant, another $50,000 and another loan of $75,000 towards the hangar at the airport. We're gonna get there pretty quickly here. In 2012, we did one, two, three, four, five, six, seven more housing projects, but by now, we had stopped doing market rate housing projects and only did affordable housing. Affordable housing being that, that, you know, certainly, you know, one of the first tenants in there were law enforcement, city of Dickinson police officers. So, so we were glad to do that essential service worker housing. We felt that was what was more needed now. Apartment prices had gone up, 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 and so we, we moved into only doing affordable housing at that time and, and we did a number of those projects. housing at that time, and, and we did a number of those projects. Did an Amber Waves, which is in Richardson, manufacturing PACE loan, as well as a couple of those actually. And so, you know, that, that was very good for us. Our biggest community development expenditure was for the Theodore Roosevelt Expressway dues, and we helped Roosevelt-Custer Regional Council with a tourism plan for southwest North Dakota. By 2013, we're in the heat of the oil play. We did a equipment loan with, with Baker Boy and manufacturing, a couple of affordable housing projects. We did at least one childcare project, a small grant of $6,000. Our community development, our biggest investment was with the airport. They did a jet service environmental assessment study. We contributed 12.5 towards that study. In 14, Kildare Mountain Manufacturing and Landis Hay Grinding and Manufacturing, half a million dollar grant to the hospital, a collateral support for trial runners. In 2015, we did one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight more affordable housing projects, couple of manufacturing, Stone Mill again, TMI Corporation. We did a childcare grant of 12.4. That was most of our work there. 2016, so far, we've done the DSU Heritage Foundation, a $50,000 scholarship grant, a Theodore Roosevelt Presidential Library grant of $100,000, Kildare Mountain Manufacturing PACE loan, and Baker Boy PACE loan. The Kildare Mountain Manufacturing project is anticipated to create 80 jobs in Dickinson. Got you through that. Sorry it took so long. We do have a one-page application for development for anybody that wants to apply for us, for help from us. It's on our website, or we'll send it to them. It does require, require some applications. Our current balance sheet, you know, the, we spend about $300,000 a year to run the office. That's been about the same for a number of years. If you add those all up, our net outside of our obligations is about $2.6 million. About half that money came from the rental and sale of the American Express and Rosenbluth Building. That building, you know, we don't like to own real estate. We believe that's best done by the private sector, but it had to be done to do that project. So we did own the real estate. We got some rent after it was paid off, and then we sold the building. So about half those reserves came from there. The other is from other revenue, from members, from the city, from the Jobs Development Authority, money that was left over after our $300,000 for operating and the investment in the projects I just went through. The reason we need a, a reserve like that is because North Dakota is one of the few states that does not have what's called a governor's closing fund. Most states, you go down to the southeast part of the country, the governors there have a 10, 20, 30 million dollar closing fund, and the governor can use that at their discretion to land big economic development projects. North Dakota has no such fund. So each economic development organization is on their own, kind of, and so we've, we've managed to, over 20 years, to get to 2.6 million. That won't do a big project, obviously. We can't promise to make a big difference in those multimillion-dollar projects, but we can sure help out in, in growth of existing businesses and recruiting some businesses to Dickinson and Stark County. Our contract proposal for this year, you've already seen this, we believe that along with everybody else, we've got to tighten our belt a little, so for the next two years, we're asking for no increase. You know, five years down the road, we do, we want a five-year contract because it's very important that we, you know, we have some consistency and predictability. Companies do not like uncertainty, and they, they are reluctant to, to do business with you if there's too much uncertainty. With a five-year contract, we at least have the certainty that they'll be able to, you know, we'll be here for them, we'll be able to help them out. The contract does have language protecting the city should sales tax language or sales tax collections drop by more than 10%. And so, and that language has been in there for a long time. Our biggest opportunities going forward, really, you know, we've got some great opportunities in front of us. On the supply chain side, supply chain in, distribution out, we've got excellent new infrastructure in rail, in highway, in pipeline, in electrical transmission, complemented by a great broadband, our broadband service. In case you haven't traveled all that much, our broadband, we're really spoiled. It's better than downtown Minneapolis, better than downtown Chicago, better than almost any city in the world, in the country. You know, they don't have fiber to the home, the way we do. A lot of improvements have been made that position us well. Growing our existing manufacturing, you know, like I say, our competition is Mexico, not China anymore. China is working towards having a consumer-based economy, you know, they'll maybe pull that off, but mostly with Chinese and Asian people. And, you know, Mexico is our new competition as far as moving manufacturing. If you read about manufacturing on a regular basis, you'll see a lot of movement to Mexico. We have a great opportunity because we've got young workforce. We have capacity in our workforce as well. They're young, they're talented, they're smart, you know. Like I say, I go back to people is the reason we have manufacturing in Dickinson, North Dakota. It's the quality people. Value-added energy and agriculture, I think we need to go down that road as hard as we can. There, you know, we've done some great value-added agriculture projects. Mindak Growers is one. Stone Mill is certainly a huge one. Value-added energy, we've got the refinery, we've got the ethanol plant, we've got hopefully another refinery coming out at Meridian down at Bellfield, and so that's important. Talent preparation is our other big opportunity. The reason that we need DSU so bad, we need the hospital and DSU to be high-functioning institutions for the city. You know, the, they both contribute greatly to our, our cultural diversity, our level of, high level of educated people in town, a high level of activity, their economic engines unto themselves. So that is why I believe that we have great opportunities ahead of us. We need to take advantage of those, so we ask your, your blessing with a continued contract for Stark Development. I'd answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Kessel, I know that, you know, we've just seen this, it doesn't look like it's quite in final form, so we're probably not ready to act on this, at this meeting. I'm, I'm thinking a next meeting or two before we would act on it. So in the meantime, what questions do we have for Mr. Baker? What comments do we have that we want to impart to staff? Anything?
I think one of the comments I have, Mr. President, is the five-year guarantee for '17 through '21, you know, where we're sitting today with sales tax collections and the economy right now, I think, I think we need to take a look at those numbers. I, I know what Stark Development does, that they do an excellent job and so on. We don't even know what we're going to do with our skilled-based pay yet in the city, which is our public safety, firemen, police department, et cetera, and our public works facility and so on. You know, a lot of us here, you know, we don't know what's going to happen yet, and you're asking for a guarantee, you know, to 2021 of 900,000. And so I, I know it's not just my concern, but I, I think we have to take a look at the skilled-based pace, see what we're going to do there before we can make a commitment to Stark Development and also to Dickinson Convention Visitors Bureau. You know, we're down 20% in, in sales tax?
We were down 20%, 19.2% from 2014 to 2015, and we expect that there'll be negligible growth between 2016 and '17.
What do we, year-to-date, 10% now? Down?
I don't have that number right in front of me. I can't share that with you.
Anyway, that's, that's some of my concerns, Galen.
Maybe one of the things that your question, Mr. Steiner, maybe would make appropriate little discussion or explanation either by Mr. Kessel or Mr. Baker on the clause we have in the agreement, paragraph five, that does address some of those concerns at least? Do you have that in front of you, Mr. Baker?
I do. The alteration in funding level clause does say that if the, the city's sales tax receipts decrease by an annualized rate of more than 10%, we'll talk, and we'll, we'll make an adjustment.
So that would basically interrupt the contract?
It would.
In that scenario?
Yeah. We leave that door open, absolutely.
And bring it back to the table.
But we're in that interruption period now from 2016, 10%. You know, I'm not-
15 to 16, I can't, you know, we all know why that is, of course.
Well, yeah, that's scary.
But then again, we, we hope to be the cure for that. You know, the oil industry may or may not come back, I would say, very gradually. You know, but our growth in manufacturing has been pretty darn good this year. Manufacturing jobs, you've seen the ads in the paper if you watch, a number of our manufacturers are adding personnel, they're adding automation, they're securing their markets. You know, we're able to retain those jobs that are at our existing manufacturing through those, through those automation efforts and through the, the growth in sales of those companies. We're able to see some growth in manufacturing jobs as a result of, you know, the, the more global economy picking up, well, national economy for us, and, and sales going on, you know, because of that. And so, you know, we need to put the horsepower necessary behind the growth in those manufacturing jobs if we can.
Well, I, I agree, and like I said, I don't disagree with a lot of things here, but, you know, I think we ought to wait till we get some of that, some of our other stuff in order before we can make a commitment like this. If it works out to where we can, I think, great. You know, you guys do an excellent job, no doubt about it. I think you showed us enough examples and so on, but, you know, I, I think we've got some big issues here.
Just to lend some clarity, if I may, the reforecasting, the budget for first reading is expected to be on the commission agenda next commission meeting.
Ah.
So it's, you're talking about a two-week period of time, not a real extended period of time. I think that's certainly reasonable since our current contract goes out till December. We, we want to get it done before our budget process, so.
I would not urge you to make a hasty decision on $50,000, much less 750,000.
Speaker, a couple of things that come to my mind, and you know, your, your presentation, I think, bore it out, but you've had to be nimble with your mission the last few years.
Yes.
The first question is, you know, should this stay with us? Should this slowdown stay with us for a year or two? Where do you see the future emphasis with Stark Development? And then the second question, I don't care how you answer them, which order here, but talk to us about what you're doing with PACE, which I think is a large part of, of the expenditures of Stark Development, as far as the terms with the recipients of, of PACE participation.
Okay. First, the, you know, as far as what we, what I see going on in the next couple of years, we're going to sell the daylights out of the capacity we have. We are very fortunate to be in a position, you know, and some of this happened after the last boom, where we have space available, you know, buildings that are good industrial buildings in good industrial areas with all the infrastructure in place that you can go out and sell. We didn't, we haven't had that, we never had available buildings before the oil boom. You know, there, every building was used for something. Nobody built a spec building just to have it sitting around. And now we have some buildings that, you know, that people got out in front of the market a little bit, and so there's some buildings available, and those are a great asset to have. You know, we're told that there's about 15% vacancy in industrial buildings. Well, hey, let's go after something to fill those buildings. So, you know, I, I'd love to tell the oil industry, we're going to sit around and wait for them to show up to fill those buildings, but no thanks. I think we need to get on it and sell that extra capacity. We've also got a lot of capacity to sell in housing, in retail space, in professional services, so I think we, we've got some room to grow, and, and I think we will grow into that. The PACE program, you know, our PACE loans do vary in the terms that we give to folks. You know, if they're a good, solid manufacturing company, we know they're going to be there for a long time. If they're building additional space, you know, they're, they're adding on to the building, those are often 20-year loans, 15-year loans, we're glad to go out 15 years and wait for, for them to repay the local community share because that is, I mean, they've poured concrete, they've put up a building, they're going to be in there, they're going to be working.
Okay, that, that's the part that I'm thinking most people aren't aware of is the repayment aspect.
Yes, we do, you know, we do ask for the local community share, the money that Stark Development Corporation put in, to be repaid to the Development Corporation, but we don't ask for it until the end of the term of the loan in a manufacturing scenario like that, and it's at zero interest. So, you know, we eventually get it back. Of course, zero interest is about what banks are paying these days. But, you know, so it's almost like having the money in the bank. The, you know, other projects, like I say, if it's a, if it's an equipment loan, those are usually just five-year loans, so that repayment comes back after five years. If it's something, you know, we did the Richardson Health Center, for example, well, we don't consider them to be the kind of entity that's going to generate a huge profit, that's going to have, you know, excess funds to pay us back. We granted them the funds for the community share. You know, it was just something that we felt was the right thing to do, to help their project out. There's others like that, you know, and each case is considered individually because of, you know, circumstances. People on the board are, you know, are long-term citizens of the community, they have a, you know, their families, in most cases, have been here a long time. They really care about the place, and they care about how we move forward, and, you know, you got to be a little bit considerate of, of those things that are not pure business but are still in the best interest of the community and the area.
Are there questions, or?
Well, I, I guess I just have one comment, you know, question. As it goes to educating the businesses, I, I hear a lot about the manufacturing aspect of PACE and stuff, but there are other businesses besides manufacturing that are eligible, right?
Yes, there are, and, you know, we use the Flex PACE program. You know, the, the key considerations there are, are they going to compete with an existing business that never got any public help? You know, and, and so you hate to build an uneven playing field. The other, you know, and the reason that we often focus on, on manufacturing and so forth is those are the businesses, you know, the value-added, they bring new money to town. You know, it's money that would never come here if, if they didn't exist. They're, they're selling product outside of our area, bringing new money in. Once that money gets here, we trade it with each other through retail, through professional services and so forth, but having new money come in is darn important. If you quit having new money come in through ag, through energy, through manufacturing, through exported services, you're going to run out of dollars to trade with each other because dollars leak out too. People go to Bismarck, people go to Billings, people go to Canada, people go to, you know, the Caribbean. They spend those dollars there. You can't just be bleeding dollars out and not have new money coming in. You got to have that new money coming in, and so we, we do try to put a special emphasis on getting that new money in here.
I guess to my question then is, the education process to the public-
Oh.
-of what you do, and, and why it does seem sometimes that it's just certain entities that are getting the loans, and, and that was a great explanation with the, with the manufacturing and sending product out and coming in.
Well, you know, we, we've done some, you know, some things that kind of surprised me, like the Landis Hay Grading deal, you know? I mean, there's a, it's a, it's, it's value-add to ag, even though it's a, you know, it's something that simply adds value to a local product for resale to local producers, but, you know, they all get a little bit of bounce from that. So, so we think things like that are important.
You know, I don't think there's anybody here that would debate the value of Stark Development and what Stark Development has done. It is fair to debate dollar amounts, and that's what we're doing a little bit. It is fair to debate dollar amounts, and that's what we're doing a little bit tonight, I guess. Having said that, it seems that this proposal basically looks at a three-year pause, if I'm reading it right. It's proposing a three-year pause with the amount of sales tax revenue that would go to Stark Development. And that seems reasonable to me. Mr. Kessel and I talked earlier today that as we go through this budgeting process, we're also going to take a look at what the projections are for the various parts of our sales tax. We'll do that next meeting or two here. So this will fit into that. I think we'll see that the sales tax will handle this. Obviously, if there are some major, some major changes, we'll have to react to that. So I guess you guys can sit down and come up with a final form for us, for whether it's next meeting or the meeting after. Maybe the meeting after would even be better. We will have looked at budget by then, first reading, and some of the rest of it. Sound reasonable?
Seems reasonable to me.
Anybody have anything else? Joe? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Where does that leave us? Leaves us getting back to Ms. Marshick, I think, doesn't it?
It does. Just a quick introduction, we'd received our bridge appraisal inventory from the North Dakota DOT, which they do every two years, and we've taken that information, put together a summary that Ms. Marshick has worked on, and she'll present to you this evening.
Good evening, President Jackson, commissioners. As Craig said, that this is a summary of the report that we got from the DOT on our We have 14 structures in Dickinson that they look at. This does not include railroad, pedestrian, or DOT bridges. Our oldest bridge was built in 1952, and that is located where the channel goes under Sims Street. All of our bridges meet the minimum criteria set by, and.
Okay, could I jump in here?
Yes.
And just ask one of you, the earlier presentation we saw by HDR with all the crossings on the Dickinson drainageway, are any of those crossings part of those 14 structures?
Uh, yeah.
Well, almost all of them are.
Almost all of them are? Okay.
In fact, I think we only have, this map shows the little pinpoints are the locations of our 14 bridges. So you notice, most of them are on that drainage channel, except for the ones northwest of town with the new construction, and there's two on the Hart River.
And those are newer also, right? The ones on the Hart River?
Um, yes. One of the ratings that they look at is the sufficiency rating, and that's a percentage score. A low rating may be structural defects, narrow lanes, low vertical clearances, there's some other issues. Our lowest rating is actually pretty good. It's an 82.3%, and that's the bridge going over Hart River down by Camp on the Hart on State Avenue. Our average rating is 95.84%. A failing score would be under 50%. And here's just a quick chart on how those fall, and you can see they're all relatively high. Another thing they look at is structural condition, and this is based on the condition of the following components: the deck, superstructure, substructure, and load-carrying capacity. And all our bridges meet the minimum criteria set by the DOT. This is kind of how those 14 structures fall with those ratings, with half of them being equal to the minimum criteria and the rest are above. We do have one structure that shows up as functionally obsolete, and that does not mean that it's not structurally sound, it just means that it might not have enough to accommodate traffic flow or high enough clearance. And that is a structure on Third Street East, just east of Eighth Avenue East. Anybody have any questions for me?
So for anybody watching us on Channel 19 tonight, we read about all these catastrophic bridge failures around the country. Those bridges likely have a very low deficiency rating in comparison to the numbers.
That is correct. I think Dickinson's ratings actually run pretty good. We're pretty high with that, and we should be pretty happy that for the age of our bridges, they have such nice ratings.
As I look at them, they're surprisingly high. They're very good numbers.
Nice, nice to get that.
Any other questions?
Mr. Jackson, if I may, Ms. Marshick, just for clarity, make sure that the public that's watching, there's some structures that weren't included in this process.
Correct.
Like interstate overpasses and even the underpass.
Right.
That was not included. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
So in, to determine how those structures are, did they go through a similar process? And what would be the timing of that kind of a process, or could we expect?
You know, I'm not sure who would be the entities that would do all that. I would guess the overpasses would probably be a federal highway entity, the railroad bridges would be probably something the railroad would undertake. Honestly, I'm not sure who would look at the pedestrian structures.
And I'm certainly not trying to suggest that they're not well-built and still structurally sound.
No, good question.
I'm just pointing out that they weren't studied.
Correct.
Mr. Kessel, those are also studied by the DOT. They just gave us our report for the structures that we're responsible for the maintenance on. Every structure that's on the National Bridge Inventory System is on that same two-year cycle, it's mandatory. Sometimes they have to do it even more than two years when we have the catastrophic failures. Every bridge in the state, I think, got reevaluated in, was that 2009, after the I-35 bridge collapse in Minneapolis? But these were just ours. I imagine the interstate bridges and the Hart River Bridge on Highway 22 are in similarly good condition.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who's going to do the downtown parking presentation? Mr. Kubis?
That would be my, I have some notes here. We've had a couple presentations from the Downtown Dickinson Association recently about the downtown parking, and we've talked about the Special Improvement District that we've had for many years now, and I think we're getting close to culminating this in a project in 2016. In your packets, there was two handouts. One of them was the handout of some diagonal parking that the Downtown Association has presented to this commission a couple of months ago. We've met with the Downtown Dickinson Association and formalized that, I think with their group at least, as far as the scope of the project. And the other handout that you have would be the map outlining the extent of that project. What we've looked at doing then, for the diagonal parking on First Street, would be extending that from Sims, one block to the east, to First Avenue East, and two blocks to the west, to Second Avenue West then. So what that would entail would be diagonal parking on the north side of the street, and the other thing that we would do in conjunction with that on the south side of First Street, and then on the north-south avenues, would be putting those, I call them parallel parking tick marks. I've seen them in Minot, I'm sure several other cities have them as well. It just tries to best delineate parking spaces for parallel parking spots. So we've put some numbers to that. We anticipate that that project would be about $15,000. It's really a striping-only project in the downtown core. The other, the other component to the project this year would be a parking lot paving, and that was a parking lot that, as I understand, was talked about and actually designed, committed to in 2012, and that's the parking lot by the West Winds Consulting on West Philard. Of course, Commissioner Steiner references another area that's heavily used for parking, and we have looked at that. I don't get there every day, but we have looked at that area as well to do something to hard-surface that lot as well. I think Ms. Goss has the numbers better than I do, but we have about $190,000 in that fund from the past year's assessments to the downtown businesses, and there's projects that we intend to do. Be open to any suggestions or comments that the commission has right now on the parking lots or the diagonal parking on the downtown streets.
Comments from Mr. Kubis?
Are you planning on getting an estimate for the one by West Winds, what it would take to complete that one, and then I think we should ask for an estimate for the one north of the Elks building also?
Absolutely. Actually, I've put some work into it. Really what the big question would be is how permanent of a solution we would be looking for for each of those parking lots. Many years ago, I want to say five or more years ago, we paved the lot north of the library, and it was done very nicely. There's some lighting, some landscaping, concrete parking lot. To me, a very permanent 50-year solution that's going to be there for a long, long time. The other option would be is we could take what we have, make sure that the drainage works, and just put a thin layer of asphalt over an open space, and put some pavement marking down and use that as a parking lot in the interim. So I've put some estimates together on both of those parking lots. I don't think we could do each of them as, or we couldn't do both of them as a permanent concrete parking lot with the funds that we have in that downtown fund.
Well, I think the one at West Winds probably needs to be considered as more of that permanent, and then the one in between, depending on what we're going to do with the downtown development. North of the Elks maybe as more of a temporary, but it does need to be striped in there north of the Elks, so that the parking is a little bit more regulated than it is.
I just think when we first brought it up for the one east of West Winds, I thought we had an estimate, granted, it's been years ago now, you know, at around $75,000 at that time, you know, but I don't know if that was a chip seal or what kind of base it was, you know, so.
Well, I'm not certain, but I think the plans that I had seen that were prepared in 2012 were for a concrete parking lot, a very permanent parking situation.
And that was around $75,000?
I haven't seen the estimate, I've just seen the plans. My estimate was a bit more than that, probably $110,000, $120,000.
It might have been updated, yeah.
Some good concrete.
Yeah, so if you do concrete at one and asphalt on the other, I think those are options we can look at.
That's kind of the direction. Mr. Kessel and I have had some conversation on this, and I think we're on the same page there.
And I really appreciate the comments that Commissioner Decker has made. We've really not invested a whole lot in that, what's being called a parking lot, because we didn't view it as a parking lot north of the Elks building. That was a redevelopment property that got taken over as a parking lot, rather than as what it was intended to be, as a redevelopment. So that's the reason why we've not seen a lot of maintenance. We have dropped some gravel, we have done some things, but it's been with a little bit of reluctance because of the economic development nature. We hope to see something different than a parking lot.
I think that hesitancy is important or is appropriate. I do. On the other hand, we can't go forever either, but I do think, I think we all want it to fit into a grand plan before we make it so permanent. Mr. Kubis, the three blocks of diagonal parking on First, how many additional parking spots will that give us?
As far as additional spaces, you know, I haven't ran the numbers, it gets you several spaces, yeah, I guess I could count them up here based on what they have delineated as diagonal versus parallel, but probably less than 10 additional spaces per block.
There would be 10 additional per block, you'd think, though?
I would say less than that. We're doing the count right now.
Well, you know, we should let you do a good count, but I know.
What I looked at, it looked like, right now, let's say in front of American Insurance Center there, you can park four vehicles, and now if you look at it on here, you can park eight. So you're doubling one side, it looks like to me. I'm sure that's not, you know, concrete numbers, but to me, it looks like you double one side and you keep the south side the same.
Right. The thing I'm concerned about is it's not going to look like Second Street, where we have a nice, big, wide street with diagonal parking. This is going to be very, very tight. I think you showed 10-foot driving lanes, I think, as I recall, on your diagram.
Well, that was put together by the graphic.
Shouldn't have said you.
Yeah, but I think what we've been talking with and looking at, doing some measurements and laying this out, is that we need to maintain 26 feet for some fire code reasons on three-story buildings down there. And the way this is marked out is, you know, sometimes a parking space can kind of be an ambiguous width. A lot of times it's shown as eight feet, very few vehicles are actually eight feet wide. So if you park against the curb, I think we'll have that 26 feet or right at 26 feet, so maintaining 12-foot driving lanes, but just 12-foot driving lanes.
I base my comments on the diagrams we had in our packet here, but that concerns me, having the diagonal parking with 10-foot driving lanes. Now, if it's really going to be something else, maybe, but that would be my comment. I'm not saying don't do it, but I think be careful with it.
I would agree, there's at least two locations on that street that have larger trucks every week, maybe twice a week, that stop in the street to unload. You know, that would take a pretty good, that would make it actually pretty dangerous, I think, if trucks, I mean, if there's cars parked on the south side, parallel, and you got one of the trucks stopped next to it to make deliveries, that only leaves 10 feet for both sides, right?
Totally. Okay, other comments? We don't want to design it here. You have some input. We'll let you run with that a little bit. Okay, the guardrail issue on State Avenue. Mr. Kubis?
I just wanted to update the commission to this. This is the South State Avenue guardrail that we installed at the commission's request in the fall of 2014. There had been a couple accidents where vehicles had left the roadway, causing some pretty significant property damage. So the guardrail was put up in the fall of '14, and approximately a year ago, we had another vehicle that left the roadway, hit the end of the guardrail, not into the functioning part of the guardrail, and again, left the roadway and caused more property damage. So a couple of weeks ago, it was actually the early morning of April 23rd, another vehicle left the roadway, hit the guardrail, this time the guardrail appeared to function. I wish I'd have taken a picture of the tracks, but you can see the vehicle taking out four or five of the guardrail posts and then getting pulled back onto State Avenue. So the guardrail appears to have functioned as designed, but there's still some anxiety in the neighborhood. Of course, now this is the fourth time that a vehicle's left the roadway, causing some damage. So I wanted to update the commission that I believe the fix, or the hopeful fix that we put in place, does work. It's not a guaranteed solution. The neighborhood would like to see something more. I shouldn't say the neighborhood, I've talked to one person in the neighborhood. There are some other options that we could consider, doing some more reflectorized signage, so those vehicles that are, all these happen with southbound traffic, or all the ones that have been reported are all southbound traffic. So to put some reflectors on the guardrails themselves, or some signs prior to the guardrail even, anticipating or alerting the motorists to this curve. even, anticipating or alerting the motorists to this curve, but again, I have to assume that some speeds were involved here. I know the accident might be under investigation still, so I wouldn't comment on that, but just wanted to update you that we're looking at it, of course, right now, we're fixing this. I do know that it's another uninsured motorist in the accident report, so that'll be coming out of our street fund, estimated at, you know, $5,000 to $6,000 to fix the guardrail.
So you're not making a proposal of any kind to us tonight, perhaps in the future?
I just wanted to update you, just anticipating that this might come in front of you again from the neighborhood, so.
Questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kubis. Looks like the last thing on our agenda is bid approval. Mr. Zurov.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. City Dickinson Project 2015-22 is for the reconstruction of Ninth Street East from 10th Avenue East to 15th Avenue East.
Mr. Zurov, is your mic on?
Yeah.
Okay. There we go.
Tough budget.
Yeah. The City Dickinson Project 2015-22 is for the reconstruction of Ninth Street from 10th Avenue East to 15th Avenue East. This project includes removal and replacement of the pavement, base course, and required stormlines and inlets. It also includes some replacement of curb, gutter, and access sidewalk. This project is listed as Priority Number 11 in our 2016 capital improvement program, and we originally carried an estimate, estimated construction cost of $1.8 million. After preliminary design and finding the scope of this project, original estimates came in, engineers' estimates, excuse me, came in at over $1.8 million. It was decided at that time to reduce the scope of the project, bringing the final engineer's estimate to $1.18, $1,186,000. So that was the engineer's estimate prior to the bidding of the project, and we received one bid from Northern Improvement Company for a cost of $1,300,166.15. This project will be funded by the 50% of the 1% sales tax. Engineering and public work staff recommend approval.
Questions for Mr. Zurov? The only thing I would point out is, yes, we'd be taking this from our sales tax, the 50%, so our citizens are paying for this street replacement, and there would be no oil impact money.
Correct.
Paying for any of it. An argument could be made that oil impact is part of the reason that we're replacing this street, because of traffic, because of the loads that we've put on this street. And I think it's important that we keep recognizing that as we go forward, as we're talking to legislators, as we're talking to our own citizens, that we really try to keep track of what is oil impact, what is some of each, what is not at all. So, for the good of the order. We need a motion then to approve or not approve this bid.
Kind of make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the motion carries. Anything, commissioners have anything else that's not on the agenda? The one thing that I would like to bring up is that we will have our reforecast two weeks from now, that will be in order, so there will be a public hearing along with that. This process will probably go quicker than what we normally do when we adopt a budget, but we do want the public to know that if they have any comment on our budgeting process, this rebudgeting, if you will, that that will happen two weeks from now for first reading. I'll ask if there's anybody from the public that has anything they'd like to bring to the commission. Anybody from the public? If not, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second? We are adjourned.